Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday, April the 4th, 2022 Work Session and Public Hearing. For those that are joining us in the streaming audience, welcome. We are going to first, because there was just a little bit of confusion over the advertising of the public hearing, we are going to start that session first for those that have joined us at 5:00 and then we may take a short recess and reopen the public hearing at 6:00. So with that being said... Let me get my stuff straight. May I have a motion that the public hearing on the Cabarrus County school budgets for fiscal year 2022-2023 be opened to the public?
I make a motion that we open the public hearing. Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Carpenter, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we will have board members Sandage, Walters, and Blackwell joining us just a short time later. They cannot be here at this time. So I will open the public hearing. We will begin with our first speaker. I'm going to read the notice first and then I'll ask you to step to the podium. Persons wishing to address the Cabarrus County Board of Education on the Cabarrus County school budgets for the fiscal year 2022-2023 may register to speak with the executive clerk via email at boardclerk@cabarrus.k12.nc.us no later than 12:00 p.m. on Monday, April the 4th, 2022. Speakers must include their name, group name if applicable, address, and phone number. Each individual speaker may address the board for three minutes and the individual speaking on behalf of a group may speak for five minutes. Groups must select one speaker to represent them. And the first person that I have on the list that is actually joining us in the audience is Pam Escobar. Good evening.
Good evening.
I think you are familiar with keying up the mic.
Yeah.
Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. I'm Pam Escobar. I'm a parent with two daughters in Cabarrus County schools and I care deeply about the quality of their education. I'm a mama bear. That's why I'm speaking tonight about the budget. Your role in deciding how money is spent is one of the most important roles you have as school board members. I'm thankful the budget process includes parents, staff, and teachers, and I wish it had more teachers on the Budget Committee because maybe teacher salaries would have been discussed. Based on the outline, you won't be asking for a bigger increase from the county for teachers or teachers assistants, but you must make that your top legislative priority in Raleigh. The General Assembly makes those salary decisions and you need to advocate for the people in the classroom. Actions speak louder than words. You thank teachers all the time, but you need to do something for them. Advocate for them in Raleigh. Our kids are hurting. Are they resilient? Yes. Are they hurting? Yes. If you truly want to address learning loss and mental health concerns related to the pandemic, a consistent, caring, experienced teacher will do that. It's the teachers and teachers assistants who are in the classroom. It's the staff and counselors who are in the schools that have the greatest impact. You will study teacher salaries this summer. Take that data to Raleigh. Explain to them why valuing teachers and teacher assistance is the best thing you can do for students. As a school district, you want to be focused on the data. The Budget Committee did that when it evaluated projects. Safety was towards the top of the list. It's that criteria that will keep county commissioners deciding partial funding for your complete ask for the school district. On my campaign Facebook page, Vote for Pam Escobar, parents shared they are interested in metal detectors at schools. Some schools have them for large events. Has the Sheriff's Office evaluated their possible use on a daily basis? Most of the money you're asking for is related to buildings, addressing upgrades or fixes that are overdue. What I can't understand is why aren't you looking at the demographic data this budget cycle? Why do you have a list of projects that includes upgrading schools in northwest part of the county and buying land for a new school in Midland, but you have no plans to buy land for a new school in West Cabarrus? Your own data shows West Cabarrus is growing and your current schools are overcrowded. I was there when you were shown the maps and the projected growth. You don't live there, but you can drive around there and see it for yourself. Land isn't going to be cheaper in 10 years. If you are adjusting the growth for Midland, adjust for growth in West Cabarrus too. Families want community schools. One parent wrote to me and said, additional schools to address the extreme population growth of our county. I don't want our kids to have to be bused halfway across the county to accommodate overcrowded schools like my kids will be dealing with. You're about to make a big ask, so big that you know it won't be fully funded. Do what's best for all kids in this county. Acknowledge well-paid teachers and teacher assistants, acknowledge their mental health and safety, and acknowledge your need for more buildings than you're actually asking for. Data matters. You do it every day to address kids' educational outcomes.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap that up.
Rely on data to determine where to spend taxpayer money. That's what I will do. I follow the data and listen to the community. I'm Pam Escobar and I'm a mama bear and I'm running for Cabarrus County School Board.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers in the room that have signed up? Okay, knowing that there was some confusion on the time that was advertised, I'm going to ask that we have a motion to recess the public hearing until 6:00. So moved. I have a motion by Ms. Adcock. Can I... A second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with that, we will recess the meeting until 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
April the 4th, 2022 Work Session and Public Hearing. For those of you that are just joining us now live, we say welcome. We have, we are actually in a recess from the public hearing that was advertised at five, and then also in some areas it was advertised that it would take place at six. So we're just trying to make sure that we cover our bases and everyone is heard. I have already called the meeting to order. I would ask that all here join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We also wanted to make sure that all the board members and the staff were able to join us in a moment of silence. It is with sadness that we announced the loss of one of our Cabarrus County Schools colleagues, Larry Wiggren, a longtime member of the Technology Department, passed away on Monday, March the 28th of 2022. Larry was retired, was retired from Cabarrus County Schools and a past member of the Bafton J.C.s. During elections, he served as the polling clerk for his Cornelius polling locations. Larry was an avid golfer, loved to fish, and spent many years as a member of the Ralph Lambert Senior Softball League. He also enjoyed Cardinal baseball and was a graduate of the University of Missouri Columbia. Above all, he loved his wife and daughter, and a memorial service will be held Saturday, April the 9th, 2022, at 3:00 p.m. at the Raymer Kepner Funeral Home in Huntersville, North Carolina. Please join us. Thank you. I know that's extremely hard for a lot of us in this room. I'm not sure what we would have done with him, without him with our IT. It's hard for me. He always took care of my issues when we had connectivity issues here when we started working between the systems when doing livestream. So that we send our thoughts and condolences out to his family. Board members, may I have a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented?
So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now that we had recessed the public hearing, I will open the hearing back up. And those that are, have joined us in the room to speak, I will take them in the order that we received them, with the exception of Speaker Number Two has already spoken at 5 o'clock. So we will now begin with Chris Duffel. I think I'm saying that correctly. If not, feel free to correct me when you join us at the podium. And while you are doing that, I'm going to read the statement just real quick again. Persons wishing to address the Cabarrus County Board of Education on the Cabarrus County Schools budget for the fiscal year 2022-2023 may register to speak with the executive clerk via email at boardclerk@cabarrus.k12.nc.us no later than 12:00 p.m. on Monday, April the 4th, 2022. Speakers must include their name, group name if applicable, address, and phone number. Each individual speaker may address the board for three minutes, and individuals speaking on behalf of a group may speak for five minutes. Groups must select one speaker to represent them. We will get started, and I will ask you, if you will, just key the mic.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate the time to be here tonight. My name's Christopher. I'm a parent of four students in the Cabarrus County School System, and I'm here to talk about the robotics program, and there's a few of us here today to talk about that. I just want to let you know, the current robotics program is fantastic. We've enjoyed it for a number of years. It's really made a big impact, but it's really early stages. We have some really in-depth participation in certain areas, but we're not broad enough. And so the ask today is to look at increase in the line item specifically for stipends for coaches, so that all the schools and all the students have an opportunity to participate in a fantastic program. I'm not exactly sure of the number, but it's somewhere between 150 and $170,000 at most. And I'll get into that math in a second. But, you know, the second reason that I'm here is just my son Charlie, my oldest son, he's a freshman right now. He's been involved in the program for a number of years, and I've just seen him and his teammates. He started competing when he was in fourth or fifth grade. He and his teammates have learned so much through the robotics program. So I just want to express like what that's done for him and his teammates. They've learned to talk to judges. They've learned to compete. So they've learned to win and lose. They've learned to work as a team, you know, as fifth graders and sixth graders, kind of this back and forth and stuff. But they always move forward, and it's just been really fantastic blessing in their lives. And we really want that to happen for others, other students in the, in the area. And then third, I'm a CFO of a large company, and I'm always looking for like return on investment. I mean, I have two decades of experience trying to invest. And from my viewpoint, this is like a tremendous opportunity in something that's a pretty small number when you start talking about $400 million. It's a pretty small number to try to create something and kind of build something from a good startup to a broader thing that will stick around hopefully for decades and maybe longer. And then, so going into the ask, so I don't know exactly what's in the budget now. I understand that the assistant coaches and the coaches right now, they split $500. This is a 26 weeks robotics program. So they start kind of when the school starts, and people are going to Worlds in then a couple of weeks from now. So it can go from September to March, April timeframe. And so it's a very, it's a long season, like really $500. When you look at the other sports that are kind of in the network, this isn't competitive at all. It's really, it ends up like $3 an hour. So the ask is to have, and it's based on tenure, I understand, but somewhere between $2,200 and $3,500 for a head coach, and somewhere between $1,000 and $1,100 for an assistant coach. So if you add that up across the 38 schools, it's right around $170,000. And then last, I see my, my warning coming up. Really, the last thing I just want to, I want to, I looked at the budget objectives from last week, and like, there's a lot of green on this checklist. I mean, pretty much everything other than hygiene is checked green. It's really, it's, it's, it's massive returns on the students' learning and so forth within, within the system. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Speaker Number Three, Kristen Trong.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The mic is keyed, and you may begin.
Well, good evening, members of the board and Dr. Kupicki. My name is Kristen Trong, and I would like to speak to you on behalf of the CCS VEX Robotics Program. I am the coach for three VEX IQ teams at Hickory Ridge Elementary School. This year, I have 31 students on my three teams. We have competed at the qualifying level, the state level, and one of my teams is going to compete at the World VEX Championship this year. The interest for VEX Robotics in my school is very high throughout the county and all, at all age levels. I had over 90 students compete to get, complete the application and the tryout process to earn a spot on one of my three teams. My principal and I decided to take 10 kids per team due to that overwhelming response from our student population. I began the tryout process in September and met with my teams two to three times per week after school. Our practices last for one hour and 15 minutes. Our competitions are an all-day event on select Saturdays and last from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Coaching a VEX team requires a large commitment. As a coach, I'm responsible for selecting the students that make up my team, coaching the students at our weekly practices, creating a budget for competition and event fees, working with the school treasurer to buy supplies, organizing team materials, taking students to competitions, and communicating with their parents. Our season lasts at least 28 weeks and sometimes longer if your team has made it to Worlds. I currently get a stipend of $250 pre-tax for all of my work. I split the full stipend of $500 with an assistant coach. I urge you to add a discussion about VEX Robotics coaching supplements to this year's Budget Committee decision. Coaching a VEX team should be viewed the same as coaching an athletic team. The commitment level required of a VEX coach matches and exceeds that required of an athletic coach. Our county's VEX program is outstanding, and CCS VEX Robotics has become a powerful force in the VEX community at a world level. Continuing this trajectory can only be sustained if a coaching staff is strong and stable. We are not going to find coaches that will take on the amount of work and man-hours required with such a small stipend. It would be a tragedy for our students to see this program dwindle. I have several families from my school who specifically chose to send their child to a CCS program because of our thriving VEX Robotics program. We are offering our students a valuable opportunity. Our program needs the help of the board to continue to thrive. Adding VEX Robotics coaching supplements to the budget means, is the first, critical first step. Changing that supplement will ensure that we have coaches who will invest in this program because they will be compensated for their work and time. The board's support in this would help to ensure that students in CCS continue to get opportunities to represent our county as a powerhouse of brilliant future engineers, scientists, and inventors. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Speaker Number Four, Chase Porter.
Speaker number four, Chase Porter.
Good evening.
Good evening. Is this keyed here? Excellent. All right, so, hey, everyone. My name is Chase Porter. I'm here to speak alongside the other robotics people and provide a student perspective on why I think it's important that we support the VEX Robotics program here in Cabarrus County. VEX Robotics is very much a sport. You may have lettered in football or softball. You know, I lettered in robotics. And like other sports, you know, I spent a lot of time doing it, five days a week, three or four hours a day. I did physical training, which may surprise you for a robotics program, like a sport, but I also developed skills in engineering, software development, managing both responsibilities and other students, which, you know, my impression, I never played other sports, but my impression is that's similar to other sports. And all those things were invaluable to me. You know, beyond those skills, I developed an interest in STEM that ultimately pushed me to pursue a bachelor's and a master's degree in a STEM field. And I really attribute that to the robotics program and being a part of that. You know, the people skills that helped the robotics, both through managing and working with my team, as well as with students I met at the global level competing, remain valuable today and are probably the most valuable part of my high school education in the school district. Beyond that, I got the other sports experience. I made the lifelong friends that I'm in fact seeing tonight, my robotics friends. And, you know, VEX instilled in me a strong sense of pride that sports typically do. I love to say, you know, we're from Cabarrus County Schools, and when we won states or qualified third Worlds, it was, you know, you're going to know Cabarrus County Schools, we're the best at VEX Robotics. So anyways, I'm just eternally grateful that I had that opportunity. And ultimately, I would not have had that opportunity without my coach, David Perisi. You know, he provided the leadership and the support to get it off the ground. He scheduled us and really kind of herded cats, you know, high schoolers can be, and provided kind of a safe space for us to do our craft. And as you've heard from others, I'm not sure that other coaches would be willing to do that without a financial incentive. So anyways, long story short is, I'm very grateful and I'm saddened to think that other students might miss out on those opportunities. So I encourage you to support the VEX Robotics programs, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being here tonight. Number five is David Perisi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Board members, Dr. Kopicki, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you with some information that will make the 2223 budget more complete for our community, our students, and our employees. My understanding of the budget process, after giving the community this opportunity to speak, is that the board and superintendent can indeed vote to add, delete, modify, or keep as-is the current budget as presented by Ms. Herndon last week. Myself and others speaking on behalf of the CCS VEX Robotics Initiative are here with one goal in mind, or as our VEX students and future engineers might say, one problem to solve. To do this, I will use the same process we teach our VEX team members that are involved with VEX to solve their design problems. Step number one, define the problem. We're bleeding coaching positions, which will impact sustainability of this program. To put this another way, the current VEX coaching supplement of $500 for a minimum 26-week extracurricular activity is no longer working. Step two of the design process, gather information. Pre-COVID 2019-20 season, 35 out of 35 CCS schools secured coaches and teams. 2122 post-COVID season, 29 out of 37 schools had no coaches and teams, a drop of 22%. We are bleeding coaching positions. Where did the current coaching $500 supplement come from? Out of thin air. There was no existing model of what a VEX coach was supplemented five years ago, and there isn't one now. No study will find a bordering LEA with VEX coaching supplement schedules to examine and compare. Step three of the process, brainstorm and analyze ideas. Idea number one, change it and make it equitable to current traditional athletic coaching supplements. That's a good idea, but some ask for competitive robotics. Is it really a sport? First off, there's not supposed to be any comments or judgment in the brainstorming session. But to answer the question, we are a team of students gathering to engineer a machine to perform a specific task. VEX would be easier if our task was always left-hand turns. We have a driver, batteries for fuel. We repair and maintain our machine in an area called the pits. We compete against other teams. Sound familiar to anybody? Who in their right mind would not categorize NASCAR as a sport, especially if you live in Cabarrus County? Next idea, let's keep the supplements the same for another year or two to study them. But we're bleeding coaches and risking the program. Again, there's no commenting during the brainstorming session, judgment during the brainstorming session. We have said that's where we are now, and yet we're bleeding coaches. Step four in the design process, develop solutions and build a model. This has already been done. It's online. It's called the CCS Athletic Handbook. Step five, present your ideas and others for feedback. I have submitted a detailed VEX coaching supplement schedule to Dr. Kopicki, Ms. Herndon, and Dr. Hill. It pretty much mirrors the CCS Athletic Coaching Handbook relative to coaching experience levels, number of students overseen. Very importantly, let me repeat, very importantly, when looking at the numbers, remember, VEX is not a fall sport, VEX is not a winter sport, and VEX is not a spring sport. VEX is a fall, winter, spring sport, spanning a minimum of 26 weeks for a public school coach.
Mr. Perisi, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
In closing, board members, for those who have attended an event, you've seen the proverbial mountaintop. You've seen this 21st century sport. We have a gem in our hands and the opportunity to create a public school nationwide model. Our surrounding LEAs will be knocking on our door asking for the blueprint. Vote to include an equitable VEX coaching supplement in the 2223 budget. One problem solved. Now to bring home a world title. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for being here. Speaker number six, Chris Summer. Not here? Okay, thank you. Speaker number seven, Ryan Osweller. Good evening.
Superintendent Kopicki, board members, distinguished guests, my name is Ryan Osweller. I work with the Robotics Education and Competition Foundation. I have the pleasure of working with CCS Robotics, and I have for about three years now. I manage event operations not only here in the state but also nationwide. I can tell you that what you have here is truly the gold standard for robotics programs in the state. And if I were to compare school district programs throughout the nation, I would say Cabarrus County is probably in the top 10 of that list. Why is it in the top 10 of that list? Event quality, community impact and engagement, student engagement, student involvement. You have everything you need, and clearly it's a successful program. But what are those top 10 districts that I'm speaking of? They treat their coaches, robotics coaches, like athletic coaches. Those supplements are right in line with each other. They realize that it's a sport. Obviously, it's already been said that robotics is a sport. It's a 21st century concussionless sport, as some may say. And, you know, as other people have already said, when those things go away, the program dies. And you truly have a gold standard program here in this district. And I personally, and I know the folks here don't want to see that die either. Some of you have been to robotics tournaments, I know, because I've seen some of you, and you know that Saturday mornings, those gyms are packed, standing room only, attendance, arrivals, what they do at a football game or a basketball game. And sports are important. I played sports growing up. I know the state of North Carolina has an important game this evening. We all understand the importance of sports. Every activity in school has its place, every single one of them, regardless of how large or small they are. But if you actually, if you analyze the data, look, all the students that are impacted, elementary, middle, and high school, the reach of this program is truly monumental in this district. And like I said, what you have here is special, and I don't want to see it die. I don't want to see other people, other programs die. I want to see it to go to that next level, you know, to treat and have these coaches be paid like athletic coaches as they deserve. And to truly state how I feel about this, I probably wasn't supposed to say this, sorry, Dave, but I just drove two and a half hours to speak for three minutes, and I'm going to drive two and a half hours home, because that's how strongly I feel that this is something that is so important to this community, these students, and the state as a whole, because again, this is the model. And if this continues like it should, then as Dave said, is exactly right, this will be a national model for other people to follow. And I will love to see that happen, love to be a part of that, and I know that the students and faculty here would as well. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your support of the robotics program here.
Thank you. Speaker number eight, Sam Tredaway.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I stand before you to advocate for one of the, in fact, the top, operational expansion budget items, and that is permanent substitutes, besides being an ultimate oxymoron. It's a critical role that I think we have highlighted. COVID has had many negative consequences, but I think one of the things that we recognize now more than ever is the importance of having quality substitute teachers in our classrooms. If we look at our TREGO priorities, which I would agree with, I think this particular priority meets all those needs. Health and safety, it gives the principal the flexibility, especially if you have a high supervision area right before school starts, you have an experienced substitute that you can put in those places, positive impact on student learning, that's pretty obvious, teacher morale and retainment. I don't know any teacher that doesn't want a quality substitute when they're not in their classroom. If nothing else, they know it impacts them the next day. Efficiency, attracting families and businesses, I think we've all had that dinner table conversation where our student had a bad experience with a substitute. Embang for your bug. As I said, COVID has highlighted this need probably more than ever. I also would like to congratulate and compliment our committee, our Budget Committee, on the work that they've done. I think having a group of educators and parents that were across the board allows for these kind of ideas to bubble up. And I just would like for you to keep that in mind. The permanent substitutes is something that a lot of our principals are actually doing with their own local school money now. This would allow every school to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, that ends our public speakers list. May I have a motion that the public hearing on the Cabarrus County Schools budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 be closed to public input?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? I declare the closed, the public hearing closed. Now we will pick up with item Senator number six, 6.01 Committee Reports. Board members, any reports, comments? Ms. Hattcock, Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Blackwell. Hearing none. We will move to 6.02 for the budget update, and we will ask Mrs. Carol Herndon to the podium.
Good evening. Hello. Get organized here. A second. All right, there we go. Sorry. Good evening, board. It's nice to be back in front of you talking about the budget today. We are at our April 4th conversation. We just completed the public hearing, and now we're going to continue our budget discussion and specifically focus on the local budget recommendation that we will put in front of the board for adoption, so that we can then carry our request to Cabarrus County later in the month of April for their consideration as they start to finalize the county's budget. I do feel like I owe the board and our viewers, whether in person or virtual, a bit of an apology. I made a decision and an assumption going into last week's conversation that I just want to explain a little bit. The decision was that since I joined Cabarrus County in early January, I did not feel and still don't feel like it was appropriate to disrupt a budget process that was already underway since the fall of 2021. So many resources had been involved in that work from both the district office and the school level, ultimately the community level as well, and the board level, that I didn't feel like I was acclimated enough to the district, nor did I think it was fair to step in and turn things upside down until I had a better understanding of our budget process and what it would yield. I do think that was the right decision, and I feel comfortable making it. And it led to an assumption, because we've used that process for several years, that the board was fully apprised of the journey around the budget development for all of our funds. And I think that probably created a more complex conversation last Monday than intended. And so I want to slow down for just a second, step back, and start with an overview of our budget process, so we can understand what we're here to share tonight, and then what will follow over the next couple of months, actually, with regard to finalizing our budget for 2022-2023. And so all of this is shared really in response to the feedback that I heard when we were together last week and that I received subsequent to our time together. Many of you were so kind to send me follow-up questions, and I was able to read them and wanted to make sure that I addressed each of them in this presentation tonight. But I do think it's important to talk about the overall budget process. And so we do complete a budget for each of our eight funds, and that is a balanced budget, where revenues equal our planned expenditures. We are a nonprofit organization, so it's important that we create a level of budgeted spending that does not exceed our expected revenues. So that is our ultimate goal, is to create a budget for each of our eight funds. The timing of our budget development varies by fund and is dependent on things like when the county expects us to present our ASK for the coming year. And a big driver of the timing of our budget development process is the approval or not of a state budget, because so much of our funding comes from the state level. Historically, our county has asked that we present our request for the coming school year in mid-April, and that's the same case for the upcoming school year this year. Oh, oops. Oh, sorry. So from a local budget recommendation perspective, which will be the focus of our conversation later in this presentation, our board, our district, has outsourced the development of the local budget recommendation request that will go to the county for consideration in their annual budget to the Budget Committee. And that's been a process that's been in place for many, many years. And I spoke a lot about the opportunity to be a part of that process and learning so much about our district and our community's passion for our district. The Budget Committee, over a series of five meetings, summarizes their recommendations and requests, and those are presented to Cabinet, Dr. Kopicki, and ultimately, the Board of Education. And that's what we talked about last week, was really just a summary of the process and the recommendations and requests that popped out of the Budget Committee work. There was no budget presented for approval, just a discussion around the process and what led the Budget Committee to the recommendations and requests that we talked about last week, and we'll talk about in just a moment. That recommendation from the Budget Committee will be presented to you all for adoption next week, hopefully, which will be before we go in front of the county with those requests on April 14th. We are scheduled for presentation in the late afternoon timeframe. We do develop our local budget recommendation at this point in the year at a very high level, because that's appropriate for what's in front of us over the next few weeks. But then we will start to develop a very detailed budget by account code, if you will, by department, by school where applicable, that is summarized during the summer months. So there's a lot of work to do, well beyond when we go in front of the county commissioners with our local budget ASK. We put together our budget recommendation for all other funds across that same timeframe in the summer, and the timing is often driven by the development and approval of a state budget. You might remember that our state budget for 2122 was approved very late in the process, and so late, in fact, that I brought to you the initial budget resolution for the school year that we're in, when we were already eight months into the school year. That's a very unusual and not best practice approach, but things were so up in the air because our state had not approved a budget in about four years, that the decision was made to wait, and we were in a CFO transition. And so I brought that initial resolution for the current year that we're in to you for approval in February. That will not be our practice going forward. It will be my goal to bring that in front of you all in the August-September timeframe. Oh, shoot. Oh, I'm going so fast. Oh. Let's try this. No. Curtis? I don't know why I'm acting honky. Thank you. Show off. Thank you. Show off. Thank you. Thank you, friend. Okay, let's get back to where I was. Okay, sorry. All right, so, we talked about the initial budget resolution and the intention to bring that to the Board in the August-September timeframe of each year. And just as a reminder, because it seems a bit out of sequence, but when we begin our new fiscal year on July 1st of each year, we are operating under a continuation budget that the Board approves in June of each year, which says, until you bring us an initial budget resolution, we give you permission to operate against last year's budgeted amounts. And so, we aren't out of compliance with regard to operating without a budget. We use that continuation budget to give us enough time to react to what the state is doing, to get our final appropriation from the county, and to build an initial budget resolution and a detailed budget underneath that that is meaningful and full, and one against which we can hold ourselves accountable to drive extraordinary outcomes for our students. So, that's the way the process works. And so, really, it is about a year-long process. If you think about the Budget Committee work starting in the fall and bringing an initial budget resolution to the Board in August or September of each year, it's a journey, and one that takes and demands and requires a lot of attention and touches along the way. Just as a reminder, this is not this year's budget, but I just wanted to demonstrate this is, at a very high level, the initial budget resolution that you approved in mid-February 2022 for the school year that we are in. And so, you'll see all eight funds totaling $434 million, and that would be the total of our revenues and our total for operating expenses as well, and capital outlay too. I wanted to reconcile our budget development processes to Policy 8100, which governs our budget, and you'll see that for most of these policy demands, we address that as part of putting together the initial budget resolution for Board approval in August and September. First, a concise explanation of our goals are considered as we're developing the budget. That certainly will be fully expressed as we finalize the initial budget resolution, but remember that our Budget Committee does filter all of their conversations and decisions through our district's mission and vision. So, the concept of letting the strategic intention of the district guide the Budget Committee's work is very alive and well, and we talked about it every time we were together with the Budget Committee. Reasons for stated changes from previous years that will also be addressed as part of the initial budget resolution, explanations of any major changes we have from an education or physical policy perspective, again, part of our initial budget resolution process, as well as providing the Board with enough details to feel comfortable approving the budget, which we just talked will total around $450 million or some odd dollars when we bring the initial budget resolution. We do separate our capital outlay and operating expense budgets along the entire budget journey. The Budget Committee does that, and all of our conversations at the Cabinet and Board level talk about these two areas of budget separately during the whole journey. And finally, confirming that our budget does not deviate from the Board's stated priorities with regard to funding. That will as well be a part of our initial budget resolution in the August-September Here are some specific questions that came either last Monday night or afterwards via email from the Board. The first one is, how many permanent substitute teachers will we be able to get for $1.8 million? We will be able to get 45, and that's one permanent substitute teacher at each of our 44 schools and one for Mary Frances Wall, so 45 in total. The question was asked, what makes these permanent substitutes different from traditional substitutes? Currently, we have zero permanent substitutes in our district, so we will be developing a full-time benefit-earning position that will have its own salary scale, and these will be resources that are permanently assigned to our 34 schools and Mary Frances Wall, and available to each of those schools to make sure that we have adequate coverage, ready and available on a full-time basis, not having to call the morning of, not having to find a sub through the pool, but somebody that's on staff permanently and paid as a full-time employee. The question was asked about our operational expansion budget, which totals about $2.5 million, and how much of that expansion budget would address learning loss? And based on the conversations that were had at the Budget Committee level, items one through five, and let me just share those with you again, permanent substitute teachers, our stipend for specialized instructional support personnel, stipends for our Opportunity School personnel, staff development, and specialized instructional support personnel coordinators at the district level have strong connections to addressing learning loss. And so, one of the five, the one through five of seven, the other two being an increase in instructional supplies and subscriptions, we feel have a very strong connection to addressing learning loss, and that totals 2.5 of the $2.7 million operating expansion budget. And we talked about this a little bit last week, but I wanted to confirm as a specific response to this question, is the request for iPads for our teachers and students a want or a need? As I indicated to the Board last week, Ben Alred and I feel very strongly that it is time to update our technology strategy, and as a result of that, we are recommending a revision to our technology ask, if you will, and removing items three, four, and five, that is iPads for teachers, additional engineer, and iPad carts and accessories. We would like to recommend that we remove those requests at this time to make room for a much-needed technology strategy that will inform our expenditures from a technology perspective more directly going forward. There was a question about why what was presented last week did not look like a budget and did not seem to follow Board policy. I hope that I addressed the Board policy piece, and the presentation last week was intended to share the process and the work and the recommendation of the Budget Committee. It was not the presentation of a budget. That's what we're going to talk about tonight, again, with a focus on just our local budget recommendation and request that we want to take to the county on April 14th, as they start to build and finalize their county budget and make decisions around appropriations to all the agencies that reach out to the county for support each year. And again, once this Board has adopted this local budget recommendation that is coming to you from the Budget Committee through Cabinet, Dr. Kupicki as well, then we will make that request to the Commissioners in mid-April. Where is the proposed budget? Again, I think I answered that in the first question on that page, and I just wanted to remind everyone that this is an active and updated list continually. This presentation will be posted to our website to complete, I think, some very extensive information about the budget process, about the work of the Budget Committee, and then all the presentations that I'm sharing with you as a Board in March and the first two meetings in April. So, this is a great and fairly easy-to-navigate space for the Board and the general public for any and everything that you might want to know about the budget process and the work of the Budget Committee. A question about what is actually available in the Superintendent's Office. When we have finalized our initial budget resolution and all the supporting information underneath it, that will be what is on file in the Superintendent's Office. What are the dates after this local budget recommendation is adopted to support our conversations with the county commissioners? Later this week, I am meeting with county leadership and folks from the County Budget Department to talk about our ask and to strategize and plan for the conversation on the 14th. Then, on the 14th in the late afternoon, we will actually present the local budget request to our county commissioners. We would expect that in the mid-May to June timeframe, we would hear back from the county with regard to our approved appropriation. We will then get to work over the summer to create detailed budgets for all of our funds, and again, the dynamic of the state approving a budget is critically important during that timeframe. And then, finally, as mentioned earlier, I will bring to the Board the initial budget resolution for '22-'23 in the April-September timeframe, and underneath that will be lots of supporting information and detailed budgets for all of our funds. There was a request to see the dollar amounts that went with a couple of the graphs that I shared last week. You'll see that in just a moment on the following slide. And then, looking again at the concept of all funds, and again, that conversation with the Board will happen when we present the initial budget resolution in August and September, or September of 2022. This is for your reading, the actual data behind the charts that I shared, and you'll see at the top, it's our revenue with ESER funding reported for '21-'22, and then without, so that you can see a more normalized federal budget contribution from a revenue perspective. And then, below is a summary of our operating expenses for the current year. And that is simply the data that supports these three charts that I shared with the Board last week. A couple of really helpful questions as I get to a point after the budget presentation to the county is behind us and can start to think about the budget process and ways we can optimize that process going forward, some great ideas about what to consider in that space. And one of those was that perhaps we should list that we do have a public hearing around our budget for the local recommendation to the county commissioners, and that we ought to include that as a highlighted part of the budget development process. All three of these are recommendations and areas of potential improvement that we will consider as we look for opportunities to optimize our budget process, be more deliberate about outlining the expectations around the budget development that are summarized in Policy 8100 with regard to committee members, helping the public more readily see the level of representation, how many district office employees, how many teachers, how many administrators, how many parents, how many community members, Board members, doing that at a more high level, and then making sure that we keep the school district's vision and mission in front of folks, and don't just mention it one time, but perhaps mention it multiple times throughout the process. A question about our TRIGO prioritization tool and whether or not we had materials online for folks to be trained in that process, or whether or not we trained folks with internal resources. We do provide that training with internal resources here at Cabarrus County Schools, and folks that are experts in the TRIGO process, Amy Louder. Also, a question about when were the budget objectives and weights that I reviewed last week approved? That was actually approved by last year's Budget Committee at the end of their process. The Budget Committee is gracious to take some time and step back and think about the budget objectives and the weights that we've assigned to each of those, and then we lock in and honor their conversations and their decisions for the next budget cycle. There was a question about why we talk about things in the buckets of operational technology and FMD, which is our Facilities Maintenance Department. There's no policy that drives that. Those are just our major buckets of spending at a summary level that we thought was informing and important for the budget, but not driven by a policy per se, just a level of detail that was appropriate and understandable. From a continuation request, a specific question about the number of folks that we are addressing when we talk about the ability to be able to pass along increases in salaries to our locally funded staff. We have 65 certified staff members that are locally funded and 296 non-certified staff members that are locally funded. Just to put that into context, remember, we have about 5,000 employees, so I think we've done a really good job making sure that we lean on the state to fund our staffing and then go to our county commissioners as needed, understanding that their focus and intention is around technology and facilities. And again, we're going to see the total ask for our county when I go to the county commissioners to present a couple of weeks in just a little bit. What we have talked about up until this point are additional requests, whether they be continuation, money that we need to keep doing what we're doing today, or expansion as it relates to new programs. In our technology expansion budget, there was a question about how many technicians we currently have. We currently have 32, and we're requesting three additional. And at the time, we were requesting an additional engineer. The two that we have are county-funded, but that's one of the areas that we are requesting that we modify on our technology requests, because we really feel like we need a technology strategy in place before we spend those monies. Some additional questions about our operational expansion, how many subs? That's the 45 permanent subs that we talked about earlier. We currently have zero. There's a request for four CISP coordinators at the district office level. The request for stipends at the Opportunity Schools is $1,200 for 16 staff members at that school. And then, at the end of this presentation, and it is posted on Board Docs and will be posted on our website after this presentation tomorrow morning, there's an appendix that includes links to every budget request, whether it's operating expense or capital. And so, you'll see the summary list for each of those categories, and then a justification page for every item that was put in front of the Budget Committee. Again, we'll be talking about our total ask from an FMD Facilities and Maintenance Department operational budget in just a moment. A question about why I re-presented the 10-year capital plan last week. It's clearly not a budget. That is absolutely correct. However, I felt like it was important context to have for understanding about the capital ask that are going to follow and that we're going to put in front of our county. And also, our county stays really connected to that 10-year plan, so I want to make sure that it's in front of us, because I know it's in front of our county, and I want to make sure that we stay connected and reconciled with our county. I'm going to talk about, there was some confusion last week about a number on one capital slide not agreeing to a number on another capital slide. They are not supposed to agree, and I'm going to walk you through that reconciliation in just a moment. And there was an ask around, as we think about the budget process going forward, particularly in this highly inflational environment, that we be more deliberate thinking about the impact of rising costs when we have multi-year capital projects that are under consideration, and that we look at the relative cost of, we have projects that range from $25,000 all the way to $499, $999. And so, do they make sense standing side by side, and do we want to think about that perhaps different going forward? So, we will absolutely consider those items as we look for ways to optimize our budget process. So, let me reconcile the two charts that looked like they didn't agree but weren't intended to agree. This is the budget recommendation to go in front of the county commissioners as it relates to capital outlay that was summarized by our Budget Committee. You'll see it totals $351.5 million. That does not agree to the center section of this funnel chart, the $406 million that I have highlighted in yellow, and here's why. If you look at the line items that make up the $351.5 million, it's our non-Facility and Maintenance Department capital, items like activity buses and furniture and equipment. It is our lower-dollar deferred maintenance items, and it is our new construction and high-ticket capital improvement. and it is our new construction and high-ticket capital improvement needs. That's what adds up to the $351.5 million. In order to reconcile that to the $406.6 that's in the center section of that funnel, we have to take out the F and D capital because you'll see it's at the bottom of this funnel. It's not in that middle section and shouldn't be. We have to take out the new construction because you'll see it's at the top of the funnel, not in the middle section. And then we have to add back any deferred maintenance projects that we don't spend for in the upcoming school year, but we have to spend for in future years because Chuck and his team do an extraordinary job of developing maintenance and replacement schedules. And we want to make sure we report to our board and to our county as our facilities and our equipment start to reach those dates that we identify capital needs. Because if we extend beyond those replacement schedules, that's when our facilities get very difficult to maintain and when it becomes very challenging to ensure that they're safe and healthy for our students. So that's not an ask for '22, '23, but it will be an ask in the future as we rotate through our maintenance and replacement schedules. So if you consider those three reconciling items, you can see the difference and the relationship between the $351.5 million and the $406.6 million. So I hope that helps in rolling that forward. Again, all of the details behind all of the asks that emerged from the budget committee process are detailed in an appendix at the end of this presentation. And some feedback around, again, making sure that we don't speak in acronyms. And I'm sometimes guilty of that. What's familiar to me, because I'm in it every day, is not familiar to those that are not. So that's a great heads up for me, and we will certainly make sure and consider that as we look for ways to optimize our process going forward. And then I think, I think we've already covered this, so I'm not going to repeat. And same with this one. So now, what we're here for tonight is to talk about our 2022-2023 local budget recommendation that emerged from the budget committee process. We are recommending a little bit of a tweak to that from a technology perspective, not because those initiatives are not important, but because we think it's super important to have a technology strategy in place that will help us guide good returns on those investments going forward. So this is the total ask. You'll see the first column is the operating expense appropriation that we received from our county in 2021, 2022. It totals almost $71 million. You'll see a summary for the continuation budget, which we talked about in detail last week. And again, we're breaking it down between operating technology and our facilities and maintenance department. And that is a total of $3.5 million. As I mentioned last week, I deliberately did not include the $1.8 million funding gap as it relates to paying our teacher supplements at 12%, which we are currently doing versus the 10.5% that the county currently has working in their budget because we have already agreed to close that funding gap for 2022, '23, and '23, '24 using our ESAR funding, and we have that approved by the state to do so. So it's not an ask for this coming school year, so I didn't include it in the continuation column. But I do believe and will continue to put that in front of us and to put that in front of the county so that we don't forget that when we get to June 30th, 2024, we're going to have a $1.8 million annual funding gap. Expansion, those are the expansion budgets. No change in operating expense, no change in our facilities and maintenance department request. And then you'll see a reduction from a technology perspective, down to $572,400 from about $3.3, $3.4 million as originally presented last week to give way to the development of a technology strategy. You'll see that in total, we are asking our county for an operating expense budget that is 11.47% higher than the appropriation that we received this year. That's a hearty ask, and we know that. But we feel strongly that if we don't put these needs in front of our county commissioners, they won't know about them and they won't have a chance to consider them for funding. So that's where we landed, and this is, in fact, our budget recommendation and ask to put in front of the county commissioners in mid-April. I put this in here in case anybody wants to reference it because the continuation budget has so many details. I won't go back over it at this point because we talked about it in detail last week. I did want to show the revised technology expansion budget ask, again, removing the three items that I mentioned earlier and resulting in a total technology expansion budget of just over $572,000. From a capital outlay perspective, this remains unchanged from last week, and this would be driven by the budget committee request that we go to our county commissioners and ask for our non-facilities and maintenance department needs from a capital perspective, our deferred maintenance, the top 36 list that we've talked about several times, and then our new construction and high-dollar ticket capital needs as summarized here. So this is unchanged from what we talked about last week. So that is what we are putting in front of the board for consideration for adoption at next week's meeting on Monday, the 11th. And again, we are focusing on, at this point, a high-level local budget recommendation that came from the budget committee process that's been tweaked a little bit to consider some opportunities from a strategic planning perspective and technology to put in front of our county commissioners to start the work, to learn about what our appropriation from our county will be, which will inform the ability for us to create detailed budgets and summarize that to the board in the form of an initial budget resolution that we'll bring to you for approval in August and September. And I think key dates, again, remember, April 14th will be the day that we go in front of the county commissioners. We are looking forward to the short session of the General Assembly in May and hopefully a very easy state budget approval process. It will be year two of the biennial budget that they just passed in November. So I'm very hopeful that there won't be lots of debate and reconsideration of year two. I've heard that there shouldn't be, but they do have to go into short session and officially approve year two. But I'm hopeful that we will have a state budget ready to work against in June of this year. So that is all I have prepared. I just wanted to tell you and remind you, the appendix, you'll see these links. They will take you to all of the information that you may be interested in with regard to the details underneath both our operating expense and our capital outlay requests that we want to take to our county in mid-April.
Okay, we will begin discussion for any additional questions or comments. And I will begin with Ms. Sandage.
If you can come back to me, that'd be great.
Mr. Walter?
Thank you for the detailed report and answering all the questions. One that just stuck out to me as you were finishing your presentation was on Slide 7. If you get to Slide 7, it says our current ask for the local amount is $82,600,000.
Excuse me, let me get there. That's for the current year. I was just using that as an example.
Right, that's something you can gauge. And then when you go back to Slide 34, and you talk about local continuation and expansion, that only adds up to 79 million.
Right, there are other revenue streams that we receive from our local government, like sales tax and Special Olympics funding that are outside of our operating expense budget that are the difference between those two numbers.
I was thinking maybe charter schools, is that in?
And charter schools is a big, yes, that's another. We fund, they fund us, and then we pass that along to our charter schools. That's another big, and I can reconcile that for next week as well. That's the biggest piece by far.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Farr?
No questions.
Ms. Blackwell?
So I just wanted to ask about the robotics. Have the local schools figured that into their budgets for this next coming year? How can we, what can we do in order to be able to help and get the robotics up to the same standards as other coaches?
And I'll ask Dr. Bish to support me from an HR perspective because we have to consider this in partnership from an HR and finance perspective. The board can adjust this recommendation however they see fit before we take it to the county. It would be nice to get that all done next Monday so that we have an adopted budget. I wouldn't feel comfortable going in front of the county with an ask if our board wasn't aligned around that ask. We have had a lot of requests inside and outside of the budget committee process around stipends in general, supplements, and additional pay. Different words, same kind of meaning, if you will. And it's hard to make decisions in that regard in a one-off fashion. And so Dr. Bish and I think that it's important that we do a salary study and a comprehensive compensation strategy for our district that's holistic in nature. I still think that that's super important. And obviously, there were some compelling presentations tonight around our robotics. So it's really at the board's pleasure. If that's something that they would like for us to wrap into this request to go in front of the county, we will absolutely modify accordingly.
So if I may, and Mrs. Hearn, and thank you for that response. So these are the recommendation requests in front of you this evening. But I will say to you that that will be something that we take a hard look at this week. And I'm not making any promises to the board or to anyone. But understanding the ask, it'll clear now because of some of the presentations this evening in terms of the public comment, we will go back and take a hard look at that. And I will sit down with Mrs. Hearn this week and see what we can do. Again, no promises, but I do think that that deserves another look to take a look at some of that request. I don't think it's an over-the-top ask, but I think we need to be careful and thoughtful about what we bring back to the, bring back to the board next week. But what I'm saying is I'm going to take a hard look at that, and I don't think it's an outrageous ask. Does that make sense? I know I'm kind of, I don't want to, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. But I do want to, but I do want to take a hard look at that because I think it's a reasonable ask.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I have to say the same thing because if you look at when that was implemented, a lot of the other supplements have gone up considerably. I can tell you that that is a gem. I personally, and I know some other board members were at that. And when you see what that is doing for our students, I think we're getting a lot more bang for my buck. And I know that Tim would probably jump over and come down here and beat me in the head because I know he loves his, his sports. But the children are getting so much from that. Like I say, I was there for at least two of their, their events, and it was just fantastic. I did have a couple more questions, and I'll hurry up, I know. But one of the other things that I wanted to see if there was any way, and again, John, I know you'll do an outstanding job, but I tell you, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our teachers, our TAs, they have worked so hard. They have been unsung heroes this past couple of years. And really, I wanted to see if there was any way that we could squeeze some funds out to make sure that they have, we can do something to really show. I know that some of the groups will do some type of picnic or something, but make sure that we are showing our appreciation and find some funds. Some of the groups will do their own little thing, but I know like the TAs you used to have, they would have to pay for that. But we ought to be able to make sure we can find some funds to pay for something, to show that appreciation. We have got a lot of companies out there that maybe would give us hot dogs or hamburgers or something. But we ought to be able to find some funds out there to pay for that, to show our appreciation. These people have broke their backsides these last couple of years to do that. And we ought to be able to show our appreciation for this, for all these people. And we ought to be able to find some funds to do that. And I think everybody on this board agrees to that. And I'll be, I'd make them potato salad if I have to, and I think the rest of us would too. So we ought to be able to do that, to do that, and to find the money on that. The other, other thing I've got, and I just want to make sure that we are accounting for this within our budget. The waiver currently allows schools, to serve schools and serve breakfast and lunch to all our students free of charge and receive higher reimbursements for these meals. Well, and be flexible for the summer. S S R O program has over 90% of the school systems nationwide will go out at the end of June, will expire. And we are going to have to do something about that. And so we, I wanted to make sure that our budget is going to account for this because we would either have to up our prices of our meals or we're going to have to do some, those children are going to have to be fed one way or the other. And I wanted to make sure that we have accounted for this in our budget because, you know, before with this program that I'm talking about, we did not have to, the children did not have to, you know, it was no income thing or anything. But they're saying that this program's going to end at the end of June. So I wanted to make sure that our budget was accounting for this.
And Dr. Hill, do you want to talk about that from a summer program perspective and the feeding our students during summer school?
Well, this is, you know, this program will be for next year too.
So for all of our summer programs, the schools that qualify as summer feeding sites, of course, they'll be taken care of. Those that do not qualify as summer feeding sites, families that indicate that they need meals, the district will pick up that additional cost.
And that has been put into the, the budget and everything for the?
That's not, that is specific to the summer programming, so we have separate funding for that. So it's not a part of the budget that Ms. Hearn has provided tonight. But yes, it has been included in the budgets for summer programming.
Okay, what about for next year, though? Have we put anything into the budget? Because we're going to have to make some adjustments for next year if we don't have this program.
Well, and John, if I say anything that's not on track, but our school nutrition folks are completely aware of the fact that we won't have the free meal program anymore. And they'll consider that as they start to construct their budget over the summer. I think the intention is 100%, you know, everybody involved, that we would provide, you know, meals for our students. And how we figure that out, that will be one of the things that we've got to work on this summer because the landscape has changed with the change in the funding from a federal perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely very top of mind for our school nutrition folks.
Okay.
I also think that we need to keep an eye on Capitol Hill because there is a lot of pushback right now on Capitol Hill for the funding being stopped. So there's a lot of debate going back and forth on the Hill. That may change, and we'll keep you updated on that as well.
Well, we all know how important it is for these children because, you know, that is one of the things that really affects the learning that these children, if they are hungry, they cannot learn, and we have to make sure of that. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. That's it.
Ms. Adka?
Thank you, Ms. Hearn, for answering our additional questions. I know this is a cumbersome budget, and I've learned a lot this year. And I think it's helped tremendously just to have open-mindedness as we approach this budget. I like the idea of looking at the stipends like system-wide and just getting a better idea of how we are funding that. So thank you for your work on this and your teams.
Ms. Sandage?
So I'm going to echo that. Thank you. I truly appreciate how you've come in, into the district and helped us out. The things that I kind of wrote down were the change in the TRIGO process. I totally agree with that. I think that we could look at different ways in how we budget. It's, it can be very cumbersome for staff. I know they come and they do it just because that's what they do, and I appreciate their, their time on it. But I do think looking at a different process going forward is very, very a good idea. The other thing, I would agree with Laura on the Vex robotics and doing something there, looking at it, figuring out, you know, how we can change that. And I'd be interested- And I'd be interested to, you know, look at a vote on that if we need to because I do think that that is a sport. And I do also agree that there's not a whole lot of, I guess, knowledge around what that stipend should be, and we could set the bar on that, and we should. I actually was able to attend as well with Ms. Carpenter, and it's nice, you know. I could see myself sitting there just like I see myself sitting at a football or a basketball game. The other thing I wrote down was there were a few emails that we received today and over the weekend in relation to a conversation on 214. And I just wanted to see if we can get some clarity on that. Dr. Bisch talked about retention at that point, and I just wanted to see where we were on retention versus, you know, recruitment, and if that's possible. I can wait till next week as well. But I think we do need to address it because in my opinion, that was a part of public comments.
Teacher retention, correct?
Yes, we got a few emails about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think it was part of public comment as well, even via email. And again, and I'll ask Dr. Bisch to share because I can't remember the specific comment about the timing of consideration of retention. But Dr. Bisch and I have had conversations, and we talked about these conversations with the Budget Committee as well, about making sure that we were very strategic in our different forms of compensation. Because we want to make sure that what we do is meaningful and equitable and competitive, and we don't have a framework that gives us confidence that it is. And so our thoughts are that we need to do a holistic, very thorough salary compensation strategy with a salary study that's underneath it to think about those things. And we want to do it sooner versus later. And so it's not something that's going to happen tomorrow, but it's not something that we need to wait months for as well. And I don't know how long it takes. I've asked Dr. Bisch to weigh in if she's got any related thinking. But I believe that was the spirit of the information that she had shared previously, and that is, we don't know how to summarize a strategic compensation effort without some information that helps us know what's meaningful and effective and equitable and competitive. And so otherwise, we're doing one-off decisions that may or may not do what we want to do, and that is drive satisfaction and retention.
I just think we need to be very clear and transparent about how that process happens. So if we are going to do a salary study, when does that happen? Who does that include? What's being looked at? I think that that needs to be very clear so that some of these questions are answered. I also agree with Ms. Carpenter and her idea about doing something. We have all weathered this storm, some a lot more than others. And since we are coming out of this storm, it's looking great, but I think that we have got to find a way to reward the people who have really and truly weathered this storm. So I'll end on that.
Mr. Walter, you have another comment?
Yeah, a couple things. About the stipend for the VEX products, if we're trying to be a world, a national leader, I think it's important that we address that in some way. But the issue there, for me anyway, is I'd love to see it added to this, but just because it's added to our expansion budget, doesn't mean it's going to be funded. I mean, we're asking for over 11% more than we're getting now. The county only has a certain amount of money, and I can almost guarantee it's not going to be 11%. So many of these items, even if they're on here, are not going to get funded, unfortunately. And then my last comment would be that I'd like the Policy Committee to kind of look at this policy 8100 because I don't think we're quite following everything that we should be, or it's not matching what our actual process is. It's just one example of that. It says here that the board will hold at least one public hearing on the proposed budget prior to its final action. Well, we just got the proposed budget now. They've had the public hearing prior to them even seeing the proposed budget. So, you know, things like that, I think we need to address in policy, maybe have the Policy Committee review that and see if it matches up with our procedures.
So we can send that policy back to the Policy Committee. We'll have the attorneys to take a look at it. But we are following it because that is what we just had was the public hearing. So I'm not real sure what your question is.
Yeah, as I read it, it says to have at least one public hearing on the proposed budget prior to final action. The public hearing we had was not on the proposed budget. Based on our conversation today, we didn't get the proposed budget until just a couple minutes ago. So that's where I'm coming from.
Dr. Kapicki, are you wanting to make a statement?
Well, to be clear, these are the requests that we're asking of the county. Your budget process, as Mrs. Hernan, I think, detailed in her explanation, the budget process is an ongoing process until we get into, basically get into the new fiscal year. So these are the budget requests and recommendations that we're proposing to the county. While I agree with you that we may not get all that we asked for, it'd be irresponsible of us not to ask for all the things that we're looking to achieve. Whether we get that or not, I don't think that's changed from this year or last year or any previous years. In terms of the policy, I'm always in favor of looking at policy and reviewing it. I think that's a healthy thing to do. But I will say, we are following the policy. We have demonstrated that. But you're talking about a budget request, a budget recommendation this evening. We're not talking about, I mean, again, I think Mrs. Hernan laid it out perfectly for everyone to see what that looks like in terms of state funds, local funds, federal funds, Kids Plus, Child Nutrition, et cetera. There are eight different funds that we're talking about. It's a long process. This is just one piece of that puzzle. So I want to be clear, we are following the policy. There ain't no doubt about it. But does the policy need to be revisited? I have no objection to that, and I think it's healthy to review policy. Okay?
Obviously, we're talking different terms. It makes it very difficult to understand, and I still think it probably needs a legal opinion on it, other than just our opinion on it. Anyway.
I'm not opposed to the legal opinion on it, but I've read this policy over and over and over again, and I keep going back and looking at this policy. And I will state clear, we are following the policy as is written right now. Does it need to be adjusted? Can legal look at it? Absolutely, and I'm all for that, as being part of a team. I have no problem asking our legal team to look at that process again. But I want to be clear, as your superintendent and the administrators that are working here, we are following that policy. And again, this evening is asking the board to approve the recommendations that we are going to go forward with to the county. So I do thank you for your input, but I just want to be clear that we are following that policy. And if we need to word it better and adjust it, I'm all for that. If it makes comprehension of that stronger for everyone, I'm all for that. So I thank you for your input.
Mr. White, would you like to address that? I think it's really very important, and Rob, you know, I don't want you to take this in a wrong way, but we have got to be very careful when we say that we're not following a policy. Sending it back as a recommendation to review, you know, that's okay with me, but I'm just thinking, you know, we need to be very careful that we're saying, we're making statements that we're not following.
I'm saying, as confusing as my read of it, if we are or we're not.
Well, that's okay. And recommending that it go back to the Policy Committee for it to be reviewed. We have attorneys here that make sure that we definitely do not violate any type of board policy. We have went over it. We've checked all the boxes. Your interpretation may be different from everybody else's, and that's okay, and you have every right to request.
I admit that. That's why we've got an attorney.
Yes, yes.
So again, I would agree with that, too. Confusing is different than not following because we are following the policy. And as was detailed for you this evening in every question that was answered, you know, I think our administrators have gone above and beyond to make sure that there is a deep understanding of what we're doing. But again, confusion and not following are two different things because we are following that policy and will continue to follow it. So again, I thank you for input. And Mr. White, your comments, please?
Sure. Mr. Walter, based upon your concerns that you raised, that I've heard, and also Dr. Kapicki and Madam Chair, we have been looking at, I've been looking at the policy today. And to summarize really quick, I will tell the board, they are following, y'all are following what is the heart of 8100, 8,100. But I will also tell you that it has not been looked at since, apparently, since about 2016. In 2016, it's a different environment than it is today. 8100, that policy, is a compilation of, let me see, one, two, three, about four statutes that kind of threw everything into a hopper and tried to talk about a proposed budget, talk about a budget, talk about a public hearing, so that it is confusing. And it needs to be, it can be worded better, I believe. And we can certainly talk about that. But I believe as y'all are sitting tonight, y'all are in compliance with the policy. And I think that what I heard tonight from Mrs. Hernan and Dr. Kapicki going forward, y'all will be in compliance in getting the information to the Board of Commissioners. There is a couple of aspects that you will not have all the information, but I think that will be fleshed out shortly. But I do believe that you are following the policy. I do agree that the policy needs to be looked at to maybe make it a little bit more streamlined, especially with today's age. And I have been doing that at the request of Dr. Kapicki and Madam Chair and the input that you provided me that your concerns are.
All right, thanks, Jay.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Carol, just for, not, I'm sorry, just for, you know, sake of folks understanding the process and, you know, what we ask of the community and the staff that are a part of the process and the board members. We may know what that looks like, but I don't know that everybody knows that how many days, how many hours is spent on that process. And I mean, it gives a little bit more respect to what is happening here today.
From the Budget Committee process?
For this whole TRIGO process. Explain to, you know, folks that may not know, how much time is put into this?
I don't know how many hours, but I know that the process starts in September, October of the fall of each year and concludes at the end of February, early March. And so there's five meetings and tons of preparation and tons, I mean, I bet there's 150 folks involved along the way at both the district office, the school level, and the Budget Committee level. And so weeks of time. I don't have a specific number, but it's significant investment.
Absolutely. I know I've spent at least five days for eight hours on those days, just, you know, listening to and understanding the process. So I just think that that brings a lot of value to what's being presented, and folks need to understand that. This is not some fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants, one night, you know, we take time doing this, and people give their time to do this.
Those were great comments, and that is a great definition of what happens. You're right. I think we all are so deeply involved in the details, we don't get that information out there and tout that process. And I think the takeaway, and I'll speak, the takeaway is we all agree that this TRIGO process is very cumbersome. It is time for an overhaul, if you will, and we're looking forward to that, as a matter of fact. So I think the board completely, everyone agrees with that. Stipends, I want to make sure that also there's clarification on that, that that normally, when they're talking about adding different levels, different, I'm not even sure how much you've got involved in this, but that usually starts at the school campus level with their school improvement team, that the asks start there.
The Budget Committee process, yes, ma'am.
Right. So, you know, I'm not sure if those schools included that in any of their initial budgets.
Did not.
Right. So that would be something the board would have to get involved in because it didn't start there.
Right. And Dr. Kapicki and I want to talk about that after hearing the public comments.
Right. That's another clarification, as Ms. Sandage spoke to. I'm not sure that that's real clear, that that's where those bases of the budget starts, is with each campus, with the school improvement teams that are collected, that are brought up to the Budget Committee, and then it goes from there. So that, I think that needs a little bit of clarification as well. I think we also need to talk about the legislative agenda, that we'll all be having a meeting with our legislators to discuss the salary increases for teachers and some of the other legislative needs that we have as a county. That we have not, as many times as I think we said it, we've not touted that either. So we're working on that. I want the general public, and I even think sometimes staff is not real clear on some of these funds and how it's used with the state only being the funding source for the teachers. And that that's a conversation that we have to have with them. I think that gets to be a little bit confusing. So what I would like to see, and including policy 8100, to be taken back to the Policy Committee, I think that's a good request, but for us to do some takeaways after this, you know, because I'm not sure how you're going to look at what you're going to do for the next process for the budget, but I think it's kind of like doing a postmortem. What has not worked, what has worked, where we fell behind in gathering information, you know, some of the things that's been taken, and what we should get out to the public. So we can put these notes on there all day long on that website, but that still may not be very clear to them, like the teacher salaries. You know, there's public comment that says that we should be taking care of that. We can ask, but we have to work with the legislators. I think that needs to be made very clear. Dr. Kapicki?
Ms. Hernan, I just again want to commend you on the work that you have, you did for this meeting and what you've done since you've been here, which was January. You've been here a very short period of time, and while you started your meeting with apologizing folks, I don't feel it's necessary to apologize to anyone. I have been impressed from day one. You continue to do outstanding work. I appreciate that immensely. Your presentation night was full of sufficient detail as policy 8100 asked. And I also want to make it clear that one thing that has not come out, you alluded to a little bit, but I know that you are working very hard with the county and talking with the county, and you've had many, 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 many conversations with the county management in communicating what some of the ask is going to be and what they might have available. It's a constant negotiation, it's a constant communication. And I know that you're doing that on a weekly, if not daily, basis, working with the county. So I appreciate that detailed work. As an entity, starting with me, first as a superintendent, as I always say, you know, my job is to get better every single day as superintendent. I know when you walk in here every day that you're always working to get better. And the number one thing I want to point out to folks that has impressed me the most, I'm saying, and again, I have yet to meet anyone in your position that is constantly talking about return on investment back to kids and how does it impact kids. I hear you ask that question all the time. That just continues to impress me, and I think you've done a great job, and I appreciate the hard work and due diligence you've given to this. So I appreciate that, I value that, and I respect all the work you're doing. So thank you. I'm not, I don't like to speak for the board, but I've had many conversations with the board as well. And I do feel confident saying that the board is very pleased with the work that you're doing and has full confidence in your abilities, and I think that's just demonstrated this evening. So I can tell you that the eight of us up here this evening really thank you and support you for all the work that you're doing. So I thank you for that.
And I will definitely follow that up with an absolute yes. I know the board is very excited to have you with us. As much as I think we haven't, the general public doesn't understand, as you've just stated, all the months of work that goes into this and all the work that you had to come in and pick up and take, that as we move through it, that you'll do a phenomenal job because you've probably taken that six months of work and explained it in one or two meetings, and that says a lot. And it's much more clear. I think there's a lot of statements that were made that we need to kind of go back and revisit with some of the budget items. But now you have a process to work with. So we really appreciate your effort. Thank you. You're welcome. Board members, we will move to 6.03, which is our board attorney report. We'll have Mr. White back to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, y'all asked me, or y'all asked us to create a resolution as it relates to moving the start date to the 2023-2024 calendar. I provided on y'all's paperwork tonight a proposed resolution that also accompanies the academic calendar. This is a little bit different than what I handed out the other night, and I've already seen that I made an error, so I need to change the, on the second page, one to the third, whereas, the start to the 2022-2023, that should be 2023-2024 calendar. So this can be something y'all can chew on. Please give me your input if you want me to change anything, and we can get this accomplished, or y'all can, it can be up for y'all's board vote next week. But I did want to present that to you based upon what I heard y'all were asking to be done, to be consistent with what the amended calendar is, or the academic calendar for 2023-2024.
So Jay, tell me again, because I see the 2023-2024. Where is your error?
On the second page, the third whereas, I said for the school cap to start, that should be changed to 2023-2024. Everything else, I believe, is correct.
Board members, I know you've probably not had a lot of time to review this, but are there comments or questions, or would you just like to take the time to review it and then discuss it next week?
Yes, sir.
My name's spelled incorrectly on the back, and the fifth whereas statement's a little bit confusing.
Rob?
Yes?
What was your statement? I had no clue what you just said.
I had them plural, it's not a singular.
The fifth whereas statement was confusing to me as I read it.
The fifth, one, two.
I think we might be throwing in too many dates.
Okay, so on the very first page of the fifth whereas, is that where you are, Mr. Walter?
That's correct.
Okay. The, according to the calendar law, which is 115C-84.2, you must start no earlier than the closest to
earlier than the closest to August the 26th, unless there's a state exemption. So that actually, the way that would be is August the 20, I think the 26th falls on a Sunday next, the 2023, let me see my calendar. I can fix that, but yes. In 2023, the closest date to, the closest Monday to the 26th would be the 28th.
Which is what you have.
And the earliest start date would be the week before. That's what it is, it's the week before. So if there's an exception, by statute, the earliest would be the Monday before, which would be the 21st.
But we don't qualify for those exceptions?
No.
I think it's no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th.
That would be the typical start date. If you got an exemption, you could go the week before, which would be the 21st. So the earliest y'all could start, if there is an exemption, would be the 21st, and what I.
Anyway, that was, my point was adding that sentence there is a little more confusing.
Okay.
Our goal, our goal is to get a start date of August 9th.
Then I can take that out.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Well, wait a minute, because I'm the, I, you may think that's confusing, but I think we have to clarify that. That would have, we, and I'll tell you what we're going to do, because no one has really had any time to look at this. That is a clarification statement of where we would have to be if we were continue to follow the law at that point in time. I think that's extremely important. Let's have a discussion about this next week, because this does not have any real deadline to it, but I think we all need to be real clear for this resolution. But I think that's an extremely important statement, so let's, let's have a discussion.
And I will tell you that y'all are, y'all are way ahead of schedule, because you'll have to request Riley by April the 1st, 2023. So y'all are 12 months ahead.
Right. And just for the viewing audience, because I know that just got real confusing, asking for flexibility of a calendar for the start date because of our learning loss, addressing our learning loss issues, this was part of the discussion of the Board during our planning session. So this is being presented to us tonight, the Board has not had an opportunity to really review it. So we will do that, and I'll just ask that y'all take it with you, we can have a discussion, put it back on the agenda for next week, and then any other quick questions or comments from Board members, we can do it at that time. How's that?
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
So since we're like a year ahead of time, is this like a next week discussion, or can we, and this is a question for the Board, I'm thinking we can do what we want to do with the timeframe since, but I just want to know, I think, well, I understand why we are looking at this now because of the thought that this was going to be for the 22-23 school year, but since we have identified that it will not be, do we, do we, I mean, is there a timeframe that we can set that is not like right now?
I'll take that, Jay, just because I think we've all forgotten how we started the conversation, that the surrounding districts are wanting to do this together, so that as we all move forward, that we, that the legislators hear us as a group, talk about asking for flexibility of the calendar, so they, we've all decided that the earlier we get these requests in, the easier it'll be for the state legislators to work with it.
So there's an identified date within that group, is what I hear you saying?
There shall be.
Okay, there's not now, though.
Right, right. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move to items under number seven, which will be for the consent or action at the April 11th, 2022 business meeting. We will begin with 7.01, which are our policies for approval on second read. We will have Ms. Burns to the podium, and I will do this like we normally do, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Policy number 3420, student promotion and accountability. Policy number 4300, student behavior policies. Policy number 4400, attendance. Policy number 4700, student records. Policy number 4720, surveys of students. Policy number 5010, parent organizations. Policy number 8305, federal grant administration. Policy number 8310, annual independent audit. Ms. Burns, have you had any comments or questions from Board members?
No, ma'am, I have not.
Okay, hearing none?
None.
Absolutely, Ms. Carpenter?
Madam Chair, I would like 4700 and 4720 to please be moved to action, please.
We will do, any other comments or questions? We will move 4700 and 4720 to action, and the others will move to consent.
Thank you.
Moving to 7.02, budget amendments, we will have Mrs. Herndon back to the podium.
Am I driving something up here? Okay, here we go. All right, as I mentioned just a while ago, reminding the Board that you all did approve the initial budget resolution for 2021-2022 on February 14th.
Ms. Herndon, will you key up, please?
Thank you. Sorry, you slammed loud enough, pardon me. That you did approve the initial budget resolution for this current school year on February 14th, 2022, and as I promised, we would bring you amendments to that resolution for any significant changes in our budget along the way. This is the First Amendment for 2021-2022, and we're starting with our state fund, and I just wanted to scroll through and highlight, you'll see this contracted services and computer equipment, that is a new allotment from the state for a safety grant that we applied for. You'll also see computer hardware for a state allotment from the, for transportation, a regular routine later in the year allotment for the stop arm and our early college transportation needs. Dropping down a little further, the big change is related to supplemental pay and benefits, and that's an allotment that we received from the state recently, totally $1.6 million. I'm actually going to talk about that in detail in my next presentation, so we'll hold that conversation. But those line items reflected an increase in our allotment from the state of just under $2.3 million. So more money, that's great. If we scroll down and take a look at our local fund, really, with the exception of this just under $400,000, when we updated the ADM of CCS domiciled students that attend charter schools and shared that with the county, the ADM currently reported by our charter schools was higher than we initially expected, and so we got an additional provision from the county to pass through to our charter schools, and that is the entire increase in the local budget for this amendment. Moving down to our federal fund, not a whole lot of changes, a couple of new ESER allotments from the federal government that are program-specific, whether it relates to identifying missing students that we have been unable to get our eyes on and information about since the pandemic, on to cyberbullying and suicide prevention, several smaller buckets of specifically identified programs that the state and the federal governments are supporting with additional ESER and pandemic relief dollars. And that really comprises the $800,000 increase in our federal budget. Moving down to capital outlay, a fairly significant, you'll see here, our Brown McAllister appropriation came through from the county in early March, and that is for $38 million, as well as the $4.3 million that came to us from the county in March for the roadwork at the new Roberta Road Middle School. So a pretty significant increase due to additional appropriations from our county related to our two large construction projects. $44 million increase in our local budget for capital outlay. The only comment about school nutrition is that we are experiencing higher revenues from a student school nutrition program, and so we have updated our budget to reflect actual revenues that have materialized. This has been a very hard one to budget initially because of the impact of the pandemic on all of our feeding programs, but the good news is we are outpacing our expectations with regard to revenues for school nutrition. And those are our large changes, there were no changes in our local special revenue fund for this budget amendment, and so I bring this to you for consideration and hopefully approval at next week's meeting. Budget amendment number one.
Thank you. Comments or questions? And I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any comments or questions.
Ms. Carpenter?
None at this time.
Ms. Blackwell?
None, thank you.
Mr. Fur?
No.
Mr. Walter?
I understand, no problem.
Ms. Sandage?
I'll continue the trend, no questions.
Is everyone good for consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. We will move to 7.03, recommendation.
Stay in here.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, exactly.
Way too much of me. Way too much of me.
Recommendation for paying the supplement.
This is a good one, this is a fun one, nice end on a fun note. Okay, all right. So we're going to talk about an additional supplement that is available to our certified staff, that was a part of our state's budget provision in the biennial budget that was passed in late November. This is just coming to you because while it was a part of the state's budget provision, they actually put the details around this opportunity on the back burner and gave LEAs time, school districts time, to process all of the other salary and benefit provisions that were a part of the state budget for 2021-2022, and we've talked about those, whether it was salary increases or bonuses and retro pay, a lot of activity with regard to those salary provisions. And so once the dust settled around all of that, they did recently publish the related guidance, and rarely does the state provide any funding to supplement teacher pay. They put that responsibility on the local government, so it's very rare that we would see this type of provision in the budget. They basically calculated an allotment for each district and then turned over the execution of that additional supplement to the local boards of education, and so that's why I'm bringing to you our related thoughts. It is a, an additional supplement that is to be awarded to our certified staff, so that's teachers, and our certified instructional support staff. It can be paid to school administrators, but only if those school administrators are paid on the teacher scale as a held harmless provision. That means what they would make as a assistant principal or a principal would not be as much as they would make as a teacher. We don't have that at CCS, so that's not applicable to us, and the appropriation clearly indicates that this supplement cannot be paid to district office staff. The funding has been communicated as recurring, which is great, and of course, we'll have to wait and depend on the budget being approved each year to confirm that, but it's really great that the state has offered this funding on an ongoing basis and will hope that it gets approved each year as the state annual budget is confirmed. Our allotment for this school year, 21-22, is $1.6 million and is intended to cover the total cost of this additional supplement. So the cost of the supplement itself, plus FICA, our district share of FICA, and plus our district share of retirement cost. And so our recommendation is that we pay a $475 additional supplement for all certified staff, a reminder, that's our teachers and our certified instructional support staff. We will make that payment on May 31st, because they get their county-funded supplement in June, this will be a nice additional layer of compensation in the month of May, and we are able to totally fund paying this to all 2,500-some-odd certified staff with the state appropriation regardless of how those positions are funded otherwise. So this is a nice gift from our state to be able to offer this $475 stipend to all of our certified staff, fully funded by the state appropriation.
Okay, comments or questions? And I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
I'm speechless, like, I'm good with that.
Mr. Walter?
No, I think that's, that's great news, and that's a way to show appreciation, like the state does, but it's our decision on how to allocate it, so there are other districts doing different things with this money, is that true?
Pretty similar to what we're doing.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Fur?
No, it's just good news.
Ms. Blackwell?
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
I like that. Anytime we can come up with something, if we can find some more, I'm all for that.
Ms. Adcock?
Great way to end.
So I think we need to clarify, just because we, I'm sure we're going to get questions, this is not in any relation to the supplement that we're currently doing with the 10.5 to the 12, to the extra.
We're paying at 12%, and that's November already been paid, and then June. This is on top of that, yes, ma'am.
Perfect, I think that needs clarification for sure, and it is wonderful news, I'm sure there'll be a lot of certified staff out there that'll be very excited, so thank you for that. Board members, I'm assuming consent agenda, no problem? Okay, thank you.
Awesome, great, thank you.
All right, 7.04, the Roberta Cochran Road Improvement Contract Approval. We'll have Mr. Brian Cone to the podium.
Do you want to come stand by me? I'm up here all night.
And thank you for being my eyes and ears back there.
Yeah, you're welcome.
It's all yours.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. So over the last month, we've been working with North Carolina Department of Transportation and the City of Concord on the road improvement project for Roberta Road, that is a part of the new middle school. We designed that project based on the traffic impact analysis performed and approved by the state, but the bid came in considerably higher than what was budgeted through the county. So through the Value Engineering Exercise, Department of Transportation and City of Concord were very receptive to reducing the scope of that project to get us closer to within budget, which we were able to do, and I'm happy to say that it is fully funded at the county level as well. So with that, I'm asking for your approval of the agreement between Cabarrus County Schools and this Board of Education and Shellco LLC as the low bidder for the road improvement package at Roberta Road Middle School. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And I'm not sure, after all that hard work was done, we would dare argue that point, but I will start with comments or questions. Ms. Adcock?
No comments or questions.
Ms. Carpenter?
No comments.
Ms. Blackwell?
None, thank you.
Mr. Fur?
No.
Mr. Walter?
Okay, will you approve this? When does the project start, and will it get done before it's?
We'll start as soon as we can, as soon as we have a pre-construction meeting with the Department of Transportation, because it has to be completed before August, so.
So will we complete it before August, you're telling us that?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Sandage?
Sound like this been a process, huh?
It has been a process. And I will reiterate that all these, all these expenses are fully reimbursable by the Department of Transportation and the City of Concord, so, which we have received all of those reimbursements to date on the previous projects, so that's good news.
Thank you. So consent agenda for all.
I just appreciate your work on this, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All good? Okay. Next, we will have 7.05, the JM Robinson High School Security Vestal, and we'll have Mr. Chuck Taylor to the podium.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Kapicki, I'm here tonight to ask for your consideration and approval of the JM Robinson Security Vestal contract. I got just a couple of things to inform you of. It's important that you know that this bid actually doesn't have to come to the Board, we're bringing it to you because in consultation with the CFO, she felt it was the right thing to do and the prudent thing to be clear and consistent, because we're so close to that bid amount. So the bid actually came in at $400,444. We negotiated it down to $247,000. I think we have a really good product that we're providing, and we're going to make Ms. Carpenter really happy, because she's been trying to do this for the eight years I've been here.
I want to approve it now.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, comments or questions? I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any.
Mr. Walter?
Just a few, looking at this, is this a completely new entrance to the school now?
Yes, sir.
Is that what we're doing? So instead of coming under the covered walkways, how it exists now, you're wanting folks to go through the uncovered courtyard to the entrances of the school, is that?
Yes, sir, that'll be for visitors, staff and students will still use the actual awning cover there. And there is a protection and awning for weather situations in front of both entrances.
Okay. That's all I had right now.
Mr. Fur?
Yeah, I think Ms. Cochran and I went out there maybe about 12 years ago when she was having a fit, so, but I think she's willing to deal tonight, if you know what I mean.
Ms. Blackwell?
No, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Did he say he wanted me to approve it? And I'm ready to go, I mean, I am ready to go. I've been ready for, what, 12 years? How many, in that, just a quick, we only have
How many, just a quick, we only have two, is it this one and one other one? Or is it three that we've got left?
No, ma'am, after this year and the projects that the county graciously funded, we'll have one left to do.
Is that-
To my knowledge.
Is that Hickory Ridge?
No, ma'am, Hickory Ridge is getting done this year.
What is the one left we've got?
That would be CC Griffin.
Is that the only high school, I mean, only middle school left?
Only middle school, yes, ma'am. We completed all of the elementaries, and to my knowledge, the only school left will be CC Griffin. We've already found a way to take care of Harris Road, we're going to do the same thing at CC Griffin.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You don't know how happy that makes me, that makes me very-
Actually, the other, there's three this year. It's JM Robinson High School, it's also Hickory Ridge High, and then Northwest Middle as well.
All good?
All good.
Ms. Adcock?
No question.
Thank you, I'm assuming this is all good for the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 7.06, the Northwest Cabarrus High School Architectural Recommendations. We'll have Mr. Cone back to the podium.
Okay, so a little backstory, we had 11 different firms submit on the Northwest Cabarrus High School project, having interest in being a part of that design team. The construction committee narrowed or shortlisted that 11 down to the top four. Last week, we interviewed those top four firms, and tonight I'm bringing to you the top two out of those presentations to provide this board a summarized presentation of their vision for the Northwest Cabarrus High School project. The format will be 20 minutes that I've asked them to give you a presentation and give you 10 minutes to Q and A with them if you would like. YCH Architects is one of the firms, Marshburg will be the second firm, and YCH will be going first. And I will turn that over to them.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. Here, we have books to hand out, but- Are we ready? All right, great, we're Team YCH Architects. We're very excited to be here to show you some of our ideas and our experience with high schools. Most of you already know us, so we'll make the introduction fairly short. My name is Bill Hughes, I'm the president of YCH Architects. I've been here for all 27 years since I got out of college. Mike Kreitzberg is our chief designer, and his favorite projects are K-12 schools, because they impact so many different lives and improve the community in the way that they do impact lives. Katie Martin is our experiential designer. Has anybody been through Hickory Ridge Elementary School? Katie uses color and graphics and melds them with our interior architecture to really create wonderful learning spaces for kids, in our opinion. We've got Chris Hilt. Some of you know her from interviews previously. She is a landscape architect and a site planner, and really a school planner that we've had a really enjoyable time working with, and we have lots of great ideas to show you for your site. One thing I wanted to mention real quick is you'll see a company called Productions Unlimited. We are working with them right now on Rowan Cabarrus Community College on teaching auditorium renovation, but they are starting to be at the forefront of, I think, the next wave of educational learning, learning in the metaverse, virtual reality, things that expand so far beyond the classroom that we're just getting into that technology now, and the pandemic really accelerated that type of learning. For those of you who don't know us so well, we've been working here in Cabarrus County for 38 years. We've done a number of schools. YCH has designed schools that educate 12,000 of the students here, so that's over one-third of the student population. And surely, you guys have been in some of our schools somewhere. We do a little bit of work in other counties, but if we had our preference, we would stay right here in Cabarrus County and do nothing but Cabarrus County schools, so we don't go chasing Charlotte Mecklenburg and all other systems. As far as high school experience, here in the county, we designed Hickory Ridge High School and JM Robinson High School. I have three children who went through JM Robinson. Katie's got one at Concord High and one at Concord Middle. We're soccer parents, we're football parents, we're cross-country, so. We, from a parent aspect, we have been in and around the schools. We know what's good, what's bad, what works and what doesn't. Don't know what works, but sometimes we know what doesn't more than what does. But we're very, we're not just architects, we're not just school designers. We are part of the community, which is why we're here. We're here for the same reasons that you are, and we want to design the best learning environments we can for the students in our county. You deal with education on so many different levels, we deal with it through design. And we really want to be the partner in bringing the vision to that, the design to that educational experience that Cabarrus County Schools wants to lay out. Again, I mentioned learning in the metaverse. Imagine a classroom full of kids with IR goggles all day, who, instead of reading about the Roman Colosseum, they're walking through it and touching it and feeling it and going all around the world. So how does that affect design? We don't exactly know yet, but we know it needs to be flexible. It needs to have a lot of technology to support that. Our design process is very engaging. Number one, we listen. When we were awarded Hickory Ridge Elementary School about five years ago, the first thing we did was sat down with all your facility staff and did a debrief on the previous project that had been designed, which I think was Mount Pleasant Middle School, and learned all the things that we could do better and improve upon the design. When we got awarded the next school at Roberta Middle School, we did the same thing with the facility staff and all the educators and said, how can we make it better? We always want to keep improving. Chuck Taylor asked us a very hard question in our first interview and said, how do we know you're not going to get complacent? And our answer to that was, how do we know you're not going to get complacent? We're a team, and just because we as a team did the last couple of schools this way does not mean we need to do the next couple of schools the same way. We need to always evolve, we need to keep learning. Technology is changing, building construction is changing, and we all need to do it better the next time. We love to engage, since this is a replacement school, there's already administration and students and parents in place, why not engage them on the best way to design a high school for the future? We have, West Cabarrus has been open for a year or so, we have lessons learned there. Let's take all those lessons and input from parents and students alike and come up with the best design for this Northwest Cabarrus High School that we can. We collaborate throughout the entire design, again, with the facilities department and the construction manager at risk. That is extremely important to control cost and throughout the entire project. The construction manager, I think, is a wonderful process, we'll talk about in a couple of minutes. But then, we've delivered. We just don't have any problems on our projects. The construction manager at risk, as I mentioned, we have probably 15 years' experience in that, and we see them as a very integral part of the process, especially now because of budgets. We're doing, we're going through right now our Brown McAllister, and we all worked together to cut, I think, about $6.5 million out of the initial budget for that project. It required some redesign on our part, some concessions from the contractor, but we all worked together as a team. The other thing is that material supply shortages are just astronomical right now. We're doing a package next week to release for roofing and steel on our Brown McAllister that won't be needed for an entire year. But that's how long it takes to get these materials now, and that's why we need to coordinate with the construction manager at risk, and it really leads to an intelligent, interactive design. We've always prided ourselves on construction administration. I just mentioned that we just don't have problems on our projects. I come to your board meetings a lot for many different reasons, but I cannot remember any time that Tim or Brian or we had to come before you for a change order, other than maybe some rock, Ms. Carpenter's favorite thing. We just don't have any problems on our projects, contractors and subcontractors love to bid on them. They're easy to construct, and we just have a proven track record so far with Cabarrus County Schools, with just no problems on our projects, or very minimal problems.
I just want to take a second to talk about the inside and the guts of the building. Our goal, do I need to come over here? Pretty loud. Our goal is to create a holistic, healthy, and stimulating environment for students, teachers, and administrators.
If you'll just keep, perfect. We strive to understand the rapid pace of technology, cultural, and social changes in society to elevate our environmental education in the buildings we design. We want to develop a safe and flexible environment that will help students learn, whether it's a traditional setting, a vocational setting, or virtual setting, and help ease the transition from high school to community college, university, full-time job, whatever path they choose. Research has shown that humans are innately social beings. They're wired for connection, especially high schoolers. Students need an open and connected environment that will encourage social, emotional, and academic learning. By creating various gathering spaces throughout the campus, we can provide places for collaboration and personal exploration. We can link together communities and schools and families and promote a positive school culture that will increase student success and create an environment for collaborative learning and connection. By providing a dynamic built environment that connects the students to each other and to the outdoors, we can ensure an atmosphere that will most suited for success.
And the outside of the site is as important as the inside, but that's the landscape architect talking. What's very important to us is creating that sense of community, and if you look at the outdoor spaces we have in our images, it's very important for us to start helping with the site to create the transition to the collegiate world that they will be entering. And the other thing is talking about site analysis. This is a beautiful site, it's an old farm site. The things that we're going to look at coming off of Kannapolis Parkway is that vision into the site. We're also going to look at vehicular access and the safety and security of making sure that we keep the cars in the front and staff and students where they belong. The other thing is making sure that we have a site design and a building design that are adaptable and have very strong adjacencies to everything that we do on the site.
Here you can see a quick diagram that we've done of the site that pretty much talks about all of what Chris just outlined. The other wonderful thing about this site is it's got almost a perfect solar orientation. The ball fields are oriented due north-south, and the windows on the classroom, the major classroom portions of the building can be oriented north and south to avoid that east and west light. I was joking with Tim Lauter a minute ago that the site has 80 feet of grade change from front to back, and that just seems to be the normal nowadays. We don't have any more flat sites, and we've arranged all of these parts and pieces to take advantage of that grade change. So we wanted to show you probably four examples of ideas that we had for your site. And remember what Chris said, number one thing about the site is maintaining safety. Safety is very key, especially on a high school site where we have student drivers, we have car riders, we have bus riders, we have kids getting out at different times of the day. We have athletic events where thousands of people are coming. So, this first scheme, can you see? Does the mouse, can you guys see the mouse? Okay, sorry, the first scheme is basically an adaptation of West Cabarrus High School. We took the basic floor plan of West Cabarrus and what we considered improved it. First, we moved the locker rooms from, the locker rooms right now are in between the loading dock and the kitchen, which is kind of a bad thing. So we've moved the locker rooms closer to the ball fields. Number two, we've moved the library media center up to the second floor. So the first floor, you can see straight through the entire building from the front to the back. And the third is that we figured out a way, construction-wise, to make it what's called type-two construction, which highly compartmentalizes the building into separate compartments instead of having one big building, and that keeps the fire contained at all. It meets code the way it's designed now, but it's a more cost-effective way to design a building in type-two construction. Do you want to talk about the site at all, Chris?
Once again, if you look at the adjacencies, you can see that the parking is close to all the athletic fields, but the wonderful thing about this is, look at the athletic complex. So it's a safe, secure area, students, I like to call them happy feet. There's only a crossing of one area of pavement for the students. So all around, it's looking at just very sound decisions on the site to make sure that safety and security are absolutely critical.
And the reason we did that was because the county obviously invested a lot of time and thought in West Cabarrus, and we thought about maybe, what could we do to hopefully make that better? Our second idea is to take the middle school that is currently under construction at Roberta Road that we designed and scale it up to be a high school. So this is basically our middle school floor plan enlarged to become a high school. And you can see in all these schemes, the blue is the circulation area. So you can see how we create major access within the building, so there's no dead-end corridors, there's no spaces you can't see. It's better for first responders when they enter the building. It's better to evacuate the building in case of an emergency. And it's better for internal policing by administrators who can see basically everything that's going on. In this particular scheme, the student parking is up here to the north, where it is directly adjacent to the football fields. There's a couple of good reasons for that. The first is the students can get off of the road first and not get stuck in the traffic lane for the stacking. And the bus parking is on the complete opposite side of the school. But there's pluses and minuses to all of these schemes. So for concept number three, we took a hybrid of the two, which we like to do. Put it in a blender and mix it up and see what comes out. So this is a hybrid between West Cabarrus and the middle school that we designed. And again, it's very similar, as Chris mentioned, the athletic fields have great adjacencies. Student parking is behind the building, and the staff visitor parking is in front. So everything is separated as best we can on this site. And the concept number four, it's basically very much a hybrid. Again, this has a three-story classroom wing, unlike the previous one, which had a two-story classroom wing. But there is enough room on the site, I think, to construct a two-story if you prefer, but this has a three-story classroom wing. And the wonderful thing about this site is, we've gotten rid of any vehicular circulation between the ball fields, so it's all pedestrian. There's a wonderful promenade that can happen between the competition field and the football field, stadium, the two, the baseball and softball field, and maybe even they can share toilets and concessions to cut down on construction cost.
We just think, I just want to make a point too, with that pedestrian promenade space, it really opens up the opportunity for the school and the community to use that space in a completely different way that's not been done before in Cabarrus County.
Also in vision, I love the 80 feet, just because you're stepping down the hill. So imagine from the competition field stepping down to the stadium. It will be a beautiful view with the creek behind it.
In this particular scheme, obviously, I failed to mention it, but you own acreage across aft and run waterway, and that can, in the first few schemes, we were able to get everything without having to cross that, is it a creek?
It's a creek.
A creek, which is expensive, but it's a beautiful piece of land on the other side of that creek. So it could be designed as a park, it could be competition fields. We thought the great place for a cross-country-
Nice cross-country trail.
Cross-country trail. So it could happen now, or in the future, or in partnership with, to create a public park back there. So we have probably about- So we have probably about five minutes left, four minutes. We did some, designed some 3D flyover views of concept number four. Austin Farr from our office did, and most of us worked with Mike Freitzberg's tutelage, but we're going to show you a couple of videos of what the school could look like in 3D.
So the first thing that we start off with is that lovely curve coming in, which is very traffic calming, and you can see that your first view is the school. So you're not encumbered by anything other than just really seeing that pronounced school from Kannapolis Parkway. And then as you come around the sweeping curve, once again, you get to see that front door. It's very important from a wayfinding standpoint for the public to know exactly where to go, but you're also showing off your best real estate here as well. So imagine that visibility and that large entry courtyard as you come in and celebrate your brand-new school.
And as we move around, this would be the three-story classroom wing. We've intentionally not included a whole lot of architectural detail on these because there is a lot of design yet to happen on a school like this, but this is kind of a box to show you what it could be. We're looking at the bus entrance right now, which would enter straight into one of those blue commons areas that I was showing you on the plan. On this side, down on the first level, would be the CTE rooms that open straight out onto a technical courtyard. And as we move around the back of the building, this would be the courtyard created on the student-driver side. And here would be, coming up are the gymnasiums, the auxiliary gym, and the main gym, with the locker rooms moved here on the one-story portion at the end, which are closer to the athletic fields. And then you have your mechanical and kitchen dock area, and then coming around this side with the one-story component, that would be the arts that are supported by the auditorium, which you see as the two-story box right there. So there you can see basically kind of amassing, and, oops. This is kind of moving into the front entry, again, as Christine talked about, to celebrate that. The media center, and this particular idea would be on the second floor, so there would be nothing encumbering your views on the first floor into the commons area. This, again, is a three-story classroom wing. This is, again, the school, side of the school facing the student-driver entry and the wonderful, not just to celebrate the front entry, but to celebrate all sides of this building, because students will be coming in from all sides. You're going to have, what, eight or 900 student drivers who will come into this wonderful courtyard area. Over to the left is where the glass is, would be a multipurpose area that would be outside of the gymnasiums. It could be used for pre-function, post-function, and also dining, because West Cabarrus got away from a formal dining room, which we think is a kind of the wave of the future. And why dedicate space only for dining when it can be used for many more things? So these are, we always, I know it's a lot to take in. We've been working on this night and day for two or three weeks now, but we, these are this kind of concepts, all right next to each other, so you can get a sense of how they compare to each other. And just in closing, I would say that we've enjoyed immensely working with your staff, Dr. Hill, and the educational side of it, plus the Chuck and the facility staff, Tim and Brian. We've had a great track record for the last couple of schools. The contractor from Shellco, the project manager, I'm trying to say from Shellco, on the middle school, Justin Height, says that is the smoothest project that they have ever constructed, and Shellco has constructed a lot of schools. So we think we have a great track record. We're great team players. We enjoy the interaction. We don't want to get complacent. We want, if we are selected, we want this next school to be the best school Cabarrus County has ever built. High schools do not come along very often. To give you an idea, I was talking with my buddy Kyle Billiford today. This high school will be bigger than the addition to the Cabarrus County Courthouse. It's five stories tall. This is three stories tall. So just to give you an idea of the scale of this. And we just would love to continue to be part of your team. With that, we will let you ask questions.
Thank you, and I will begin with Ms. Adcock.
Thank you for that presentation. That was really enlightening and very nice. I mean, I like all of that. One question I do have is what is the total number of students that this capacity will serve?
It has been told to us that it wants to be 1,850 students, is what the RFQ pointed out, and I believe that's the capacity of West Cabarrus.
Okay. And then the other question would just be, because we have a limited amount of land in Cabarrus County that is going very fast, is there an ability to add or increase capacity on this site at a future date?
Yes, there's always a way. You need to make sure your core capacity is there for your dining and other things, but three-story, I'm tripping over myself. A three-story classroom wing is a little difficult to add onto because it is three stories, but there are certainly ways that you can increase capacity as you move forward.
The notion of doing the three-story instead of the two-story was to allow a footprint out the rear of the building to do in addition to the classroom wing. I think if you did a two-story, then obviously it's going to be difficult to add a third level on top of that and still be in operation. So Scheme Four is in place to allow that addition out to the, to the west end.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Carpenter.
Okay. Chief, pardon my chance, and ask the questions that I wanted to ask. So thank you.
Ms. Blackwell.
I just appreciate all of the work that you guys put into all of this. I'm definitely a visual learner, so when you do that 3D imaging, it's just greatly appreciated. It helps me understand better, so thank you.
Us, too.
Mr. Farr.
No, I just want to tell you thanks for the presentation, and I know the schools that you guys have built in the past are top-notch, so thank you very much. But I guess I've got one question. So you built West Cabarrus?
No, we did not.
You did not build, I thought you said you built West Cabarrus.
No, no. We, we've been in and around West Cabarrus a lot to know what we think we would do differently. Yes, sir.
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, also thank you for the presentation. A lot of good information there, a lot of good concepts. Obviously, schools are built different now than they have been on some of our past ones, and you talked about some innovative things that go into this. The CTE, briefly touched on that. Is that, is there things that go into that to address our CTE programs?
Mostly it's flexibility. I know Northwest has a, I don't want to say nursing, it's a.
Automotive and some other things, right?
Yeah, health sciences and automotive. They're just, we do a lot of community college and university work where these things are on a next-level scale, but basically, it's really creating a flexible space for these things to happen.
More of a different style of a classroom than your typical box.
And a lot of times, there's a classroom associated with the lab space, which is what we see in higher education.
I think in the, I'll say in the old days, because I'm old, but in the old days, the CTE rooms used to be in the back of the school, and they were one-story, and they kind of opened out onto, you know, areas that were so remote from the other classroom areas that if you were in the CTE program, you could be lost, and then nobody else that was not in the CTE programs would even know what was going on. So I think the current educational model these days is to try to integrate those programs in with the classroom spaces so that everybody can kind of participate, whether in one of those classes or not. You're continually walking by them. You can make some of the entryways into them glass and see what's going on, and you'll have students who might not think they were interested in CTE, but all of a sudden could be introduced to those programs and might find that that's something that they'd be interested in. So I think that's one of the things that you have done at West Cabarrus, and we think that would be something to do on this school as well.
So that was a positive from West Cabarrus. I think West Cabarrus also talked about a lot of public-use spaces where they can block pieces of the building off for just events or something, but they can't get into the rest of the school. Is that still part of the concept?
Right. And that's what we've done here. You can see that the blue areas of the school are able to be locked off from the classroom areas, so that when you're having sporting events, you don't have people walking around in the hallways for the classrooms. We've done that on all of our schools.
Okay, other things that we need to, that we think about is maintenance of this building once they get built.
Sure.
Energy efficiency, didn't address that a lot in your presentation.
It's kind of a common, I think, is a standard for us, is to consider, you know, the HVAC and all those systems are top of the line. The whole COVID taught us what to use and what not to use, so.
West Cabarrus has some of those things undercover indoors instead of outside.
Yeah, all the mechanical equipment is inside mechanical rooms. In the old days, we used to put that on the rooftops, and that type of equipment is hard for Chuck to maintain, and it's also because it's exposed to the elements, it shortens the life of that. And so these days, we've worked out with Chuck on all the previous schools, and, you know, you guys have standards for how to do all of that, but we've kind of refined that down pretty good to where every school that we've done for Chuck and his group has met all the standards you're talking about from energy efficiency.
Okay, thanks for your time.
I wanted to make a quick point about COVID, and I think we mentioned this in our last presentation, was we now use what's called bipolar ionization systems inside of the HVAC units and also UV lights, and that kills COVID and any other viruses that are floating around in the area, in the air, including mold and just common flu. So that's something that I think is the first time it's been done school-wide in Cabarrus on Roberta Road Middle School.
I'm glad you pointed that out. That was a great statement. I was going to ask you about that. Ms. Sandage.
So most of my questions have already been answered. First of all, thank you for the presentation and the time that you've taken to make sure that we understand what you plan to do. My daughter attends West, so I'm really questioning about the entry to West, and which one of these is not that entry? I mean, I struggle every morning in the lawn. Yeah, but I'm sorry. No discredit to.
Dining, is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about coming into the school, there's a potential for accidents to happen, in my opinion, and I'm just an average person, but, and I just want to see which one of these is not that.
All four of them, we've.
Okay. And then the other thing, you talked about the eating space. So are you saying that there is not a designated cafeteria where folks will sit down at, and there's just spaces everywhere? Did I hear that correctly?
Well, it's all yet to be designed. It's whatever you, as a, as a school system, want. But we know that West was designed without a formal cafeteria, and it does seem that most school systems are going to, it's a three-story building, so especially high school kids are so used to grab-and-goes and things like that. So we did imagine that a concept would be to have eating.
Areas.
Areas dispersed throughout the entire school.
But not your typical, like, cafeteria. There is a serving line in the kitchen and all that kind of stuff, but we kind of envisioned more maybe a few seats by that, but then some other areas where seating could happen, outdoor courtyards.
I think the biggest difference between all four of these schemes and what you have at West Cabarrus is that the media center is on the ground floor, and it's a plug for everything. When you walk into that school, you can't really see the courtyards beyond, and the eating areas are widely dispersed, and they're fairly small. And so by moving the media center up to the second floor, we have the ability to have a bigger space for dining that looks out on the rear courtyard, and we think that's preferable to the design that you've got right now for West Cabarrus.
And my concern with that is that the lines are ridiculously long. So I don't know if this helps to reduce that, but that was the reason for my question.
And honestly, it gets back to when I said we listen. We would take all of the lessons learned from West Cabarrus, our middle school, whatever school, and want to make it better the next time. And like I say, you have an existing student population. We found that at Northwest, we found that students come up with some of the best ideas sometime, and we would love for, if it's okay with you, for them to be a part of the design process, because they can tell us what works and what doesn't. And you might say, you know, we just want a dining room again, which.
Yeah, the campus is beautiful. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying some of those learning lessons that, you know, you guys obviously went to the school and looked at it to see how you could do things differently. I appreciate that.
Well, we've done that on our own, because we really haven't involved your side yet in that collaboration, so, you know, if we're selected as the architects, then that would be the first thing that we'd want to do, would be able to sit down with you in a collaborative process and understand what you know and work with you. Like Bill said, work with the students, work with the faculty, to come up with something that kind of marries all those concerns into appropriate response.
Well, thank you guys for being here. That was a great presentation, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
You want to take a moment? Board members, would you like to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Absolutely.
How about we go left?
Can you, with the cameras, five minutes? Thank you. We will take a five-minute recess break and be right back.
With those health science programs and the STEM learning. But it doesn't stop there. We want to keep in mind that these students are going to go off to community college, they're going to go to university in those programs. We have the experience, these slides here, these pictures are from Central Piedmont Community College, their classroom building on their central campus utilizing dental and a myriad of other health science related programs. We want the student to feel like when they're in Northwest Cabarrus, they're going to be in the same space they will when they're in college or even in the workforce. And finally, 21st century schools that we've done for you all. The Performance Learning Center, Mount Pleasant, wide open spaces, collaborative spaces. Students want that collaboration where they can work together in teams or work independently in other areas. Robotics labs, wide open spaces are very important in 21st century schools.
I'm going to talk a little bit about cost management. Obviously, there's probably no more hotly debated topic in school construction than the cost and the budget. And as you guys are well aware, this will be the largest school project in the history of Cabarrus County. We have an excellent track record managing cost. We'd like to illustrate that using this graph. This is actually data from DPI, School Planning, that graphs the average construction cost of a school across the entire state goes back to 2007. So the blue there is elementary, the green is middle, red is high school. As you can see, it's tremendously difficult to predict the cost of a school because this graph is all over the place. But we have consistently brought our school projects in below the statewide average. That begins all the way back with Cox Mill High School, which I know some of you were involved in and some, all of you are familiar with. When we bid Cox Mill High School, it was the least expensive high school bid anywhere in the state of North Carolina that year. Bid at $140 a square foot when the average cost of a high school in North Carolina was $168 a square foot. One's a little bit more recent, Montgomery Central High School, which has just recently completed. You can see there, right there, it pegs the graph on the statewide average. If you look at middle schools, very similar success. Those two are yours, Hickory Ridge and Winkler Middle Schools. The least expensive middle schools bid anywhere in the state of North Carolina, not just the year they were bid, but any of the five years previous. $104 and $107 a square foot when the average was $138 a square foot. Mount Pleasant Middle School, very similar story, under the statewide average. This one is in Guilford County, a little bit over the average. I'll explain why. That was an onsite replacement, so we had to build the new middle school while the old one stayed occupied. Then the cost of demoing that old school and rebuilding the field, so there was a lengthened construction time. So that one was a little bit over the statewide average for those reasons. Elementary school, this is one down in Charlotte, you can see below the average. So why is that important? Well, if you start to look at the cost of a high school, there's not a whole lot of data since 2019 on DPI, but we can go one county over in Charlotte Mecklenburg. They have two high schools that are under construction. Those bid for $300 a square foot about two and a half years ago. They just bid the third one, same program, same number of students, $400 a square foot. So that's what you're facing with construction costs these days. So you better pick a firm that stays on the right side of that graph, and we have a history of doing just that. Part of the reason is contractors like to bid our work. This quote here from Montieth Construction, they build a lot of schools all across the state. You can see there, they specifically name us and give us preferred pricing. The other thing, back to the cost estimator, Palacio, being part of our team so that we're constantly analyzing the cost of these schools, there aren't any surprises.
So as Todd said, we understand that everyone's watching the dollars that are invested in school projects, and we want to be good stewards of those investments. We do that in many ways, but one of the important ways is to actively mitigate potential change orders while we have the most control over those, which is during design. What this boils down to is asking the right questions at the right time, early in the process, whether that's documenting existing conditions or getting comprehensive information from stakeholders and local code officials. Two is having a proactive approach to the market volatility that we're seeing now and also to our quality assurance inside our office. With the lead times that we're seeing and the unprecedented construction costs, there's no time for taking a wait and see attitude, and we're committed to being proactive. So you've seen our bid results, but how does that shake out in final cost? This is the final pay application for Montgomery Central High School that Todd mentioned. As he said, this bid right on the 2017 state average at roughly $250 a square foot, but how did that number hold up? Well, it actually went down during construction. Through open and honest communication and hard work, we were able to return $890,000 to Montgomery County. Let me say that again. This project bid at just over $61 million, and it finished with an actual construction cost of just over $60 million. Almost a million dollar savings in construction. Now, this is just one example, but it's not our only example. Winkler, Hickory Ridge, and Mount Pleasant Middle Schools all completed returning funds at the end of the project. We also have three projects with Almonds Burlington School System that are ongoing right now. All those are tracking to return funds at the end of the project as well. So returning funds at the end is not just a hope for us, it's really our goal at the end of the project. So I want to switch gears a little bit, get away from the dollars and cents, and talk about our commitment. So first, let me assure you, our team is ready to undertake this high school project. In fact, the timing really couldn't be better. We've just completed two large projects that Matt, Tarek, and myself have been heavily involved in over the last couple of years. And that allows us, as Todd said, to take significant time of principals and put them on this project. As you can see, Matt and Todd will be heavily involved in the upfront programming and schematics. Our lead design principal, Tarek, will have significant involvement in the early design phases. And as your project architect, I will be involved from the beginning to the end, keeping continuity throughout the process. But really, the size and complexity of this project means that everyone in our office will have a chance to work on this project. And as such, I can tell you that this will be the most important K-12 project in our office. Furthermore, I'll say that we won't chase any other high school projects if we're awarded this project while this is in design, because this project requires and deserves our full attention. We understand how important this project is to everyone here, and we can say that because it's just that important to us as well. Thank you.
So you've already started doing some work for you and on the project. Chris Hilton was asked to do some planning early on with this site. We asked her to go a little bit farther and create another scheme that you haven't seen before, and I want her to talk a little bit about what you see on the screen here.
Thanks, Matt. I had the honor two and a half years ago of test fitting Cox Mill on this site, and I can now proudly tell you I've looked at about four or five different iterations of Cox Mill on here. And one of the things that I wanted you to know is how much I love this site and always have. It's a beautiful old farm. So one of the things that we looked at here was could we minimize the amount of parking in front and actually create a wayfinding traffic circle to start separating students and parents? And in this particular scheme, look at actually having what is now called a triple Q, because the Department of Transportation is now requiring us to add 2,000 additional feet of queue line from when West Cabarrus was designed. So with that in mind, we're trying to minimize that look of, you don't want to design a school campus for the cars that are going to be there for 45 minutes in the afternoon. So here, we want to keep that open pastoral look. We want to put the band practice field out front because we want to celebrate the spirit of Northwest. So in that way, what we've done is create that athletic complex to the north, minimize the amount of parking that goes around the site. We want to keep this minimal staff and visitors to the front. I am SEPTED trained, which means I have 88 hours of advanced training with law enforcement and safety and security specialists. And I know that that parking lot out front needs to be very small so that the eyes on the street, the receptionists, can see everyone who's coming in and out. And we know from that traffic circle that any visitor who doesn't know where they're going needs to come to the front door or exit the site easily without going around the back. So these are some of the things that we look at when we're designing high schools.
And I want to mention one other thing on this site plan. You see the transportation maintenance facility. We recognize that in the RFQ, you likely would like to include a facility, a satellite facility such as this. And so we've gone ahead and placed it on the site next to that bus parking lot for some continuity there with that new facility. And we've recently completed and are underway with Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, and doing two of these facilities similar to the size that you would be looking to have here. We didn't stop there. We'd looked at another floor plan, site plan, excuse me, with a different high school footprint. Listen, all of these were done in a vacuum without your involvement, and that's sort of the one thing we want to make sure here. This isn't going to be your final design. The final design is going to include your involvement, the central office involvement, as well as students, faculty, and staff. So again, Chris, if you could share just a few items on this site.
So Matt loves that I love to challenge him. So here I said, give me a rectangle, don't give me a box. And all of a sudden, when you look at that long rectangle, what happens is it allows a lot of opportunities on the campus. So what we did is we pulled the stadium down, stepping down the hill below the student parking lot. Remember, 80 feet of grade change. So imagine that stadium down in a bowl right over the creek. But what that narrowness did, moving that stadium, is it allowed us an opportunity to look at, what if we were able to keep the pond? Imagine coming in the drive from Kannapolis Parkway and seeing that beautiful pond, and it is beautiful. And then imagine that ability for staff and for students to decompress with the walkway around that pond. These are things that are absolutely critical now, and I think the stress that staff and students have, we need to figure out ways that the campus and that the site can detox everyone in it. And then look at the queue. Instead of having the triple Q out front, making it look the width of Kannapolis Parkway, what happens if we take the cars up to the north, go around where the staff event parking is, come back out? I needed that parking anyways. I needed that drive anyways. So we haven't added a single piece of pavement that doesn't get used during special events. These are all things that we're going to work very hard with you. As Matt said, we're in a vacuum right now, but we want you to know that we have a lot of things that we're looking at, and we're going to show you a lot of things too.
We don't just work in 2D. We also work in 3D as we design these projects. So we're going to show you my new best friend, the technology guy in the back, right? See if we can get this site plan. So the second site plan you saw, we modeled it in 3D. We're just going to sort of walk around. Chris and I are going to sort of tag team this and explain this three-story concept to you at the classroom wing.
So imagine this approach where you're coming, it looks like a farm field. We're dropping down 28 feet to the front of the building, but there's no parking out front. Imagine the view to the building, and look at the pedestrian friendly plaza that comes across, once again calming the cars, and scaling down that parking out front to give clear sightlines from safety and security. And once again, the buses to the side where there's not a clear view from the Kannapolis Parkway, and then fitting that transportation building, stepping it down the hill. You can see the student parking stepping down, and look at that view to the stadium overlooking in the creek. And then that idea of saving the pond, and look at, once again, that view as we come around the side. Once again, reiterating, this was a beautiful farm. I mean, Green Acres Farm is going away, but it doesn't mean that the essence of the farm has to leave. And then look at the pond and the sweeping view of the athletic complex, and look at how happy the feet are there. Students won't have to cross a lot of pavement. So it really is, once they're on that side of the campus, it's a very safe environment for them.
Got a few more seconds here on this slide. We've also modeled the building, as you can see here, so we're going to take a fly through through the building. We can use these videos, we can use pictures, renderings, in board meetings, we can use them with community to show off the design. You're spending a lot of money on the building, and you want to be sure that you have some buy-in from the community and obviously with this board. So one more video. The interior fly through, I'm going to walk through here. Main entry, we got a security vestibule, as we just heard tonight from Truck. We don't need to renovate this building, we're going to have one already. Clear sightlines from the left side here where the administration is. Look at the school spirit on display right in front as students walk into this main lobby pre-function space. All of our core functions are situated around this area. We're flying in through the cafeteria at this point. As we back out of the cafeteria, I want you to notice that there's a big wide open portal there. We can close that portal. It's an opportunity for you to close and open based on events, for sound perhaps, but also if there's an event, you can open it up. Flying into the auditorium, this is 850 seats, adequate size for a school population of 1,800. Look at the acoustical clouds, using some ideas about a tree canopy, if you will, and the wood walls on the side that are acoustically designed to help with acoustics in a facility such as this. And as we get back out of the auditorium and walk down towards the classroom wing, notice the wide corridors, the views that you would be able to have from both down here as well as up top, down onto the student population, restrooms here on your left, and then this connector, glass connector between those core functions and the classroom wing.
We call the size on the streets, visibility for staff and for students to be able to see anything that's happening outside the building, in the stairwell, and as they're coming up into the lower space and the upper space of the media center. This is absolutely critical to reduce the amount of altercations that can occur. So imagine even here, eyes on the street, seeing the front courtyard area, and there's no area here where there are any blind views, any ambush points. Those are things that we look at very carefully.
Here we are flying into the media center, very collegiate feel here, again, with that big portal that we can close if the media center specialists would like to have it closed or open based on different events. And then back down the stairs here into that main lobby, notice to the right a sort of fishbowl that students can peer out over from the media center down into that main lobby during events. Again, beaming with school pride with the logos there, using colors of the facility with the school.
So we just have one more slide, but as Matt mentioned, that 3D is a great tool to engage not just students but to communicate with the public. Obviously, they're very interested in where their dollars are going, and those types of images can help with that. So with that, we will wrap things up and let Tim get to his basketball game. This is a slide from the Mount Pleasant groundbreaking. So I know many of you probably were there. It was really just a tremendous night for us. The entire community came out to see that school start construction. And, you know, I think what was really interesting for us is it wasn't just parents and students, but it was grandparents, and it was people who didn't even have kids in the school. But it was that sense of pride for that entire community, and we feel that same sense of pride for Northwest Cabarrus. So, you know, as I mentioned, we have been involved with Cabarrus County Schools for a number of years. Our association with Cabarrus County Schools began in 2003. That year, there was a $93 million general obligation bond package. Up until that time, there were two firms that had been doing the majority of the work, two architecture firms, and they got the majority of that $93 million bond package, but we got a chance. We were given the two smallest projects. It was the media center addition at Concord High and the science wing ironically at Northwest Cabarrus. But those were the only two projects in that entire $93 million bond package that came in under budget. And in fact, as Lain mentioned, we returned contingency money on both of those projects at the end of the job. So since 2003, we've done 26 projects with you all on 17 different campuses. And again, I think that relationship endures because of the trust that we've earned, because of the reputation that we've earned for being cost-effective stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and doing exciting, engaging spaces. So I'll close with this. This is obviously a huge project for Cabarrus County Schools, a huge project for Cabarrus County, and a huge project for us. As Lain mentioned, you have our commitment that this will be the only new high school project in our office for the duration of the project. It's that important to us, and we think it's going to take that much time and energy. And with that commitment, we can promise you our maximum effort, our full engagement and all the heart and soul we can put into a project. So thank you very much for your time, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage.
So thanks for the presentation. I appreciate the visuals. So I heard you say there will only be one high school at the time. Will there be other projects, like other schools going on? Is that what?
Sure, we'll have other projects. I mean, typically, we...
So how many?
It's hard to say. I mean, you know, right now, we probably have 20 active projects, but they're everything from some security vestibule renovations for Almonds Burlington to, you know, the Montgomery High School that was just completed. So we will definitely have other projects, but this will be our primary focus on for new schools, new high schools.
So you know that we'll be requesting or we'll be looking forward to that return of money since you've said it so many times, right? The other thing I'll say is I really like the start, stop, continue. I know that's not the name of it, but we do this at my job. I really truly appreciate that, and I know that it will bring a lot of discussion and a lot of ideas for you. I like the pond, but I'm worried about the safety component of that, so can you talk to me a little bit about the safety?
I'll let Chris address that.
Yeah, I'm happy to, and actually, we talked to Chuck about it the other day. This pond, here's my idea. There are going to be CTE programs that actually the pond can support. When we are working with you very early on in the process, we're going to find out what those programs are that you're going to have in CTE and see if there's a benefit to having the pond. One of the other things is I don't want to use this pond as a storm pond where you have to maintain it and have a contract with the state on how you maintain it. So this really does become the experimental pond that if you have 4H, if you have veterinary, if you have any kind of aquaculture, it is a definite benefit to have this pond. But we also understand that we may determine early on that we don't want a pond there. And in that case, we will work on other attributes of the site. But we did want to show you that it is worth at least us investigating it in the early process to see whether we can save it and whether the program and the curriculum can be supported by the pond.
Absolutely. The other question I have is about the entrance. I'm real big on the transportation in and out. I didn't understand the... Okay, so there's like a circle there, I forget what they call them. How is that used? I don't see how you get out from there.
Actually, the traffic circle is in one direction. So traffic circle, actually, you come into the right, and you just go around and you only exit where you need to. So students would come around and exit north of the school, of that classroom wing. Parents would stay around and go to the lower end. There is something that in 20 minutes I cannot explain, but I promise as a school planner, with over 40 years of experience, I can help with this. We have a development to the north. There is a potential that we may have to make a connector to that. And what I did in this particular design is illustrate how we could do it. I have iterated probably four or five different traffic designs, how to get 3,400 parents in the queue line. West Cabarrus, when it was designed, it was actually for 1,380 parents, not 3,400 parents. Yes, I am in agreement. So all we're doing today is showing you examples that we're not only thinking about this campus, but we're thinking about what happens if we have commercial developments to the north and for some reason, the city of Kannapolis may say, we want you to have a connector to the north. I want to assure everyone here tonight that we have been thinking about it, and we are going to make sure not compromise what happens on the site. But if you look at that traffic circle, it's also if someone comes from the north and comes down and goes, oops, I'm on a school campus, I don't want them three-point turning at an intersection. I want them to go around the circle and head north. So these are all things that we're thinking about right now, and I promise we'll vet very early on in the process.
Last question is about the cafeteria situation. You guys have a, not a building, but a space for kids to sit down in that area, and I know that these could possibly change, but my question is, is there a possibility for, like, because when you go to a college campus, which these kids will be transitioning, a lot of them will be transitioning to college, there are several different places you could get food from. You know what I'm saying? It just, my daughter goes to West, I said that earlier, and she complains a lot about the time it takes just to get lunch. And I think if we're thinking about that, and, you know, in the beginning stages, we can help to decrease that.
No, I agree. You're right, there are a variety of ways of doing it. I think what we showed here was a more traditional cafeteria with the ability to open that space up into that large commons and potentially have kids spill out there. You know, I mentioned we designed Cox Mill High School. There's two, actually, two serving lines at Cox Mill. There's one in that large commons area. It was an administrative decision as that school opened that they weren't going to use that because of the mess and the cleanup and things like that. So I think there is a large administrative component as well. It's our job to listen to all those pros and cons and show the options and determine what works best. But there's a wide variety of ways of doing it.
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I do like the idea of using the terrain for the site. I like the cost focus that you provided to us. But the thing that I think, I have a question about is you've been to Northwest before, right, the existing school?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we've done work there.
Okay, I mean, this school has an amazing agricultural program of greenhouses, and it's got a big barn, it's got animals that roam, you know. Where would all, any of that go? Does that all go away, or is that...
No, it definitely doesn't go away. I mean, I think that's part of the programming exercise, that whole stakeholder engagement to determine what is included. I think Chris alluded to it a little bit around the pond, you know, for some of that agriculture, you know, maybe there's not a pond there, maybe it's just a large green space, or maybe it's a large greenhouse. I think those are all things that could be added. The beauty of the pond option is we have space to do those sorts of things, whatever they may end up being, whether it's, you know, if it's not a pond, maybe it is the greenhouse, or maybe it is, you know, goats like they have at Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant High. So all those things could be incorporated. I think, you know, we understood from the RFQ, a lot of the focus was health sciences, but there's also that veterinary science component as well, and then the stuff that would carry over from Northwest also. So yeah, there's room for all of that.
And we have discussed it, and I wanted to, I wanted to make sure you knew, we actually have discussed it. So part of what I loved about the pond is it actually showed off the veterinary program. So rather than being hidden in an area in the back, you're actually showing off what your students are doing. They also need a water supply, and that is a spring-fed pond. So, you know, I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but I want you to know, we were excited when we found out that they had that program.
Thank you.
Mr. Ferk.
Thank you very much for the presentation, but I think that pond is just perfect for Northwest Cabarrus. Me being, you know, the lifelong Cabarrus County resident, remember when the beginning of Northwest, Old Northwest, I think that's almost, it takes me back 30, 40 years, and I think that's perfect for that community.
Thank you.
If it can work.
Sure.
Ms. Blackwell.
I agree with Tim. I love the aspect of having the pond there, so thank you guys for all of your hard work on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
Well, mine, I think with the ag, it may fit in the pond wood, but one question I do have, how far back is the band practice field actually from the parkway? I'm thinking of the safety factor, you know, could people that's on that field be seen from that highway and everything? That's my only concern there.
No, and I understand what you mean. We actually, the elevation at the intersection of the parkway is actually at 774. The average elevation across the building itself is 750. So there's actually 24 feet of grade change. So you actually come down the hill, so there definitely, the sightlines would be very different from any cars that are driving. Do I think you will be able to see that broad expanse and it's not encumbered by any parking? Yes. But the band field will be lowered than the road for exactly the reason you were talking.
Okay, good. That was one question, because when you look at, oh, they can just look right there. Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Ms. Adcock.
Thank you for the presentation. I really loved the initial process, the all the engagement you talked about and the pictures of all these different pictures and designs and people being involved in that. I think that's really critical in the success of this project. And then I like the return of funds as well, like what Ms. Sandage was talking about. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for being here tonight. We appreciate it very much. Great presentation.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, I will be placing this on the action. I'm assuming everyone is good for that, so you'll have time to review for next week. And we will move to 7.07, field and track improvement requests, Concord High and Mount Pleasant High, and we will have Mr. Brian Cohn and Mr. Tim Lauter back to the podium.
Tim's going to show them out. I think Mr. Tyson's going to join me. So Concord High School and Mount Pleasant High School are two of our oldest high school facilities within the district that have been identified for football field upgrades and track upgrades. With the recent collaboration project that Cabarrus County had with the CVB, Cox Mill High School and JM Robinson High School, as you're aware, have their fields upgraded in the last couple of years, as well as West Cabarrus has their football field and two additional fields that were funded by that partnership. With that said, we have a plan in place, obviously, with the new Northwest Cabarrus project on the horizon, that that field will be replaced. And there is the possible private partnership group, L... And there is the possible private partnership group looking at Hickory Ridge High School to come in and upgrade those facilities at that site as well. So that leaves us with Concord High School and Mount Pleasant High School that really did not have a plan in place to make any athletic field or track improvements. So what we have done is we've received pricing from three different companies to look at improvements to both of these facilities. Those three companies are GeoSurfaces, Astroturf, and FieldTurf. GeoSurfaces is the company that we worked with on the CVB project, and they are the ones who did the original Central Cabarrus High School synthetic turf field for us. We had not worked with FieldTurf or Astroturf, but they came recommended to us by other firms. In getting those three prices from those firms, Astroturf was higher than the other two. FieldTurf and GeoSurfaces were comparable, but GeoSurfaces did come in as the low bid. With that said, that provides some continuity between the schools using GeoSurfaces because of the technology, and the material and the product will be the same. So what we are recommending is that we move forward with the upgrades to these two sites with GeoSurfaces as a local vendor based out of Mooresville, North Carolina, that we've worked with on these previous fields. And I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, and I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any questions, but thank you so much for doing this.
Yes.
I think this is an important thing for us to look at.
Ms. Carpenter.
How long would it take them to complete this work?
It'll take them all summer to complete this work, but they've guaranteed us that we will have the fields available to us at the start of the school year next year.
For both of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And really, this is taking into consideration, looking at the safety factor, because both of these fields are in, I mean, the field and the tracks are in not great shape.
I'll let Mr. Tyson speak to that if you'd like.
And then too, that this will bring in the possibility to bring in, and this is directed really at you, to be able to bring in a lot of tournaments and things like that. Is this correct? That could-
Right.
-bring additional funds into these schools? Is that correct?
Right. Currently, we have four of our high schools that have turf fields. And this will make a great opportunity to bring in even larger events for our CVB with return on investment for our hotels, for our restaurants. And you're correct, the kid could bring in a lot of revenue to our county. And to your point about the facilities, we only, currently, we only have one track, one rubberized track that we can have, host track events on, and that's West Cabarrus High School. So yes, we need to pick off a few of these projects each year and get more proactive in upgrading our facilities. And if we have the opportunity to do this for these two older communities, I think we ought to take the opportunity to do that.
So this would rubberize those two tracks also?
Yes, ma'am.
And would that be able to give them, where they could do conference?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm asking these questions because, again, that would give revenue to these schools also?
Right. Because currently, we're there going to run track meets at other districts in the Charlotte, in the Rowan County, other areas, and we could host more events in our county.
Because we basically would have to take this money out of fund balance. Is this correct?
Correct.
Because, you know, if I'm taking that out there, I won't, if I'm going to do this, I want to make sure that I can maybe recoup a little bit of this.
Right.
Okay, that's my question.
Ms. Blackwell.
Much needed. I'm very excited that we're doing this, so thank you guys very much.
Ms. Furr.
Yeah, I've got about 25 questions.
You can just ask one of them, so pick the best one.
But no, I just want to say thank you guys. I know that some of us have been trying to get to this point for about 12 years now, and I'm so happy. Especially for Mount Pleasant and Concord. That's probably the two schools with the most tradition in this county and most, honestly, fan support. And they deserve something like this. It's going to be a shot in the arm, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation on that. I did have a question related to Concord High School, and as a band parent, there's a safety, I mean, this is a safety-focused project, and it's to address the athletes, but we also have the band members and the cheerleaders and everyone else who uses the walkway that goes from the top of the school there down that big hill to the backside of the stadium that's in disrepair, and it's a safety issue in my opinion. It's got potholes, it's got cracks, it's got other things. And I've also heard that the access road from the bottom of the stadium where the emergency vehicles come has an issue as well for vehicles getting in and out of that stadium. Is there a way that we can address some of those issues as part of this safety?
So I'll speak to the emergency access road. That will be the primary point of entry and exit for the contractors as they perform the work at Concord High School. And they have said that they will need to make some improvements to that access as a part of this project. They won't be permanent asphalt paved improvements, but it'll be a much better ingress and egress for those support vehicles during events at the stadium. As far as the walkway coming down, we can go and look at the possibility of maybe patching some of those areas when we have the asphalt crews on site working on the track. You know, depending on what level that is and the cost associated with it, we'll determine what we can and can't do at that point.
Let you take a look at it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Sandage.
I'm a ditto what he's saying about the walkway down. That thing is treacherous in Concord.
Yes.
I traveled it many years. I'm glad that this is happening now. I heard about the track at Concord for a long time, so I'm glad that it's happening now. One of the things that I wanted to say earlier, you know, I've seen the same folks in for these bids and in for, you know, to get these contracts. I'd love to see some different folks. I know you guys have a process, and I appreciate your process and I respect it, but I would love to see some different firms coming in here. I saw the same two people since I've been here. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the presentation. It was great. I look forward to the new, because of course, those two are the oldest, and we, if you've been around a while, you know exactly what they look like. Brian, you do not need pictures tonight. So we appreciate the presentation. So I'm assuming everyone is good for consent.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you are good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, with that, that concludes our business for tonight. I would ask for a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-3181183, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-3181186. So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And with that, we will say good night to our viewing audience, and we will see you Monday, April the 11th, 2022, for our business meeting. Thank you and good night.